When I did it, on the one day after I left.
Good evening, everybody. We try to begin these meetings on time. We're running a little bit behind schedule, but that's okay. What we're here to do at this portion of the agenda is to recognize one of our students. And I want to say that how we provide these recognitions is we have two awards, "I Believe" and "Yes, We Can." I just wanted to tell you how these two awards work. The "Yes, We Can" is more about whole schools being successful, making some progress. You don't even have to be the best school in the district, but you're the best to your parents, your teachers, your students, your staff members. And together, that's where the "Yes, We Can" award, they've accomplished something. And we alternate that with another kind of award, which is the "I Believe" award. And that's more to the individual. Usually starts off with a student and then expands to an adult. Now, how this generally works is we realize that if we're successful, it's usually because somebody's in our corner, or has got our back, or is out in front, or on our side. And so, how we try to structure these awards is we say, "Who is a student that we believe in, or believes in him or herself?" And then what we do is we say to that student, "Tell us who believed in you. Why did you end up getting this award?" So it's not just one person getting an award, it's two people. And it's a student recognizing an adult, usually an adult, but it could be anybody, who helped them get to where they need to be. This is what a community is about. And I'm honored that my colleague, Willa Powell, is going to present this month's "I Believe" award.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I get to emcee this award because Frank Fowler Dow School Number 52 is one of my liaison schools. And tonight, the Board of Education presents the "I Believe" award to Rysa Barrett. Rysa, why don't you come right on up? And your current teacher as well. Rysa is a sixth grade student at Frank Fowler Dow School Number 52, where his talents in music, singing, and acting have flourished. He's begun to venture into comedy and will be playing a part of Farquad in the school's upcoming production of Shrek.
Wow, cool.
As if these achievements weren't enough, Rysa is also actively involved in student council and coordinated the "No One Eats Alone" campaign at his school. Just like it sounds, it makes sure that when people are in the lunchroom, apparently eating alone, it extends the invitation to people to sit with someone who might not have a friend, right?
That's awesome.
He has been an inspirational role model for his peers, encouraging all to participate in the life of the school community. I'm going to pause there and present the plaque, which reads, "I Believe: Certificate of Recognition Awarded to Rysa Barrett, Presented by the Board of Education and the Superintendent of Schools in recognition for his artistic achievements and leadership in his school." So if you're... If Rysa's family could stand and be recognized? Okay? Rysa, oh, come on up, come on up. Now, Rysa, would you care to share with us the... your attribution of Ms. Calagero, your teacher and Lego League advisor at School 52?
Oh, wait, the mic, sorry. Right, since I was in kindergarten, I've had the teacher, Mrs. C., all the way up to fifth grade, and she has been a huge influence in my life. Supported me when I was down. Supported me when I was down, kept me going if anything felt hard, and just always motivated me to keep me going, to make me the person I am today.
So, Rysa, how would you like to give your certificate to your family member? And I'm going to ask you to present this certificate to Mrs. C. Can you do that for us? Can you turn the plaque around, we can get a picture? Okay? Thank you so much, that's the ceremony, okay? Thank you for coming in for this.
Let's give the management another round of applause. Our meeting will start at 6:30.
No, no, it is.
Today is April 25th, 2019. It is 6:30 on the nose.
What's your name?
Um, I don't know where she is, but we're going to get rolling. Let me send her a text. Give me one second, folks. I'm trying to find where our clerk is. She probably thought we weren't going to start on time. Wonder where she got that idea from? She may need...
Oh, I love that.
How embarrassing it's going to be when she walks up in here and we're like...
I know, let's do that.
We are ready.
Natalie.
There you go.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Isn't that just...
All right. Good evening, everybody. Now the meeting can get started. She was probably just thinking...
Dr. Lee, you're late.
She was probably thinking that we were going to be late.
You're trying to think that we're going to do that kind of time that people talk about.
Okay, here we go. We always begin these meetings with an act of reverence and a pledge of allegiance. And I'm looking at this young lady sitting right here. She's got that really pretty sparkly backpack. You, yeah, you. Could you help us with the pledge of allegiance, young lady? All right, she knows, right away to go right to that mic. You've got to tell us who you are first.
I am Loyalty.
Pull the mic down just a little bit, sweetie. What's your name?
My name is Loyalty.
Okay, oh, Loyalty, wow. That's a beautiful name. Loyalty, where do you go to school?
Um, School 42.
42, you like it there?
Mm-hmm.
What's your favorite subject?
Um, art.
All right, all right, let's give Loyalty a round of applause. That's beautiful. Loyalty, I love that name, that's beautiful. Loyalty, you can begin by leading us, leading us adults, in the pledge of allegiance. We'll go along with you, okay?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's show our thanks by giving Loyalty a round of applause. Great job. She just is composed and she's didn't, you know, sometimes we even have adults that are reluctant to step to the mic. Is that mom next to you, Loyalty? Well, I know, let's give mom a round of applause. She did such a great job with Loyalty. You've done such a great job with Loyalty, beginning with the name. That is a beautiful name. Is that, who's that sitting next to you? Is that your son? All right, where do you go to school? 39, you like your school there? It's okay, all right, all right, he's honest, he's honest. What's your favorite subject? Sports, okay, all right, all right. Well, let's get that whole family a round of applause. Thank you very much for coming, we appreciate you. Okay, next thing on the agenda is our minutes. We have to approve the written recordings of our meetings, and they are called minutes. We had meetings on April the 2nd, April the 11th, and April the 23rd. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Some of them.
They're moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by...
Second.
Vice President Elliott. All those in favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, those minutes have been approved. We, we're flexible here at the Rochester School District because we're a flexible organization. We work with a lot of different folks who have a lot of different needs and priorities. And the, our superintendent had this idea that we should put the spotlight on schools and students and staff and families that are doing well. And when he came up with this idea, and everybody thought it was an awesome idea, sometimes we don't think things through completely, and we realize, especially today, that sometimes families have to be someplace, at home, eating and so forth. So Dan and Linda agreed that we should alter our agenda a bit so that we put the spotlight on the school at the beginning of our agenda so they can go home and do the things they need to do. Dan?
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. We are delighted to have School 8, and as, as we said, they're really going to share with us some of the things that have made them successful. So Laurel, come on up.
RCA! RCA! RCA!
I'd like to introduce you to the RCA team that has helped move RCA off of the receivership list.
All right now.
Okay, so please, let's get you all together. I'm honored to be here, and I thank you for the invitation, everyone. Delighted. I'd like to introduce you in order of standing, so Stephanie Thompson, Assistant Principal for us at School 8. Gio Valone, Data Leader, I'm going to say. Michelle McCourtney, Social Emotional Leader. Josh Cornu, EL Education Leader. Mark Liro. You're going to go give me the whole title because he likes to say the whole word.
Community School Site Coordinator.
Yeah, he's awesome, too. Leader. Andy Grantham, Assistant Principal. And Stacy Berry, who has been gracious enough to step into my Expanded Learning position because we've had a resignation. So team, thank you for being here. All right, we're going to do this in 15 minutes or less, and here we go. Do we have our PowerPoint? Let's see if it's going to show somewhere. If not, I'm going to do it. So here we go. I'm going to start things off very simply with this. "Anytime you have an opportunity to make a difference in this world, and you don't, then you are wasting your time on earth." Roberto Clemente. And I think that we need to talk about how RCA is starting to move things and hitting it out of the park. All right, let's do this. Thank you. Ready? My mission statement, you can read it, but we're all about the whole kid. This is a school where we enjoy the adventure of learning and promote the highest level of achievement for all. We respect our school, the people in it, and the work we create. We recognize that as a team. We are stronger together than we are apart.
Church out there saying amen.
So what you see in front of you are our, in our instructional priorities at School Number 8. As an EL education school, we have a work plan that guides our work each year, and within that work plan, we set goals related to these three areas, plus leadership, which we'll talk about in a little bit. But Mastery of Knowledge and Skills goal is related to our students' actual achievement data. And so we set a goal around that achievement data each year. As you can see, we base this on our NWEA MAP scores and the percentage of students at our school who are making the projected growth each year. And so as you can see, we are shooting for 51% of students this year to achieve that growth in both math and ELA. The second goal is related to culture and character, and what we believe at School Number 8 are that our howls or habits of work and learning support students in achieving their academic goals, as well as developing them as people and their character. And so our howls at School Number 8 include perseverance, a commitment to quality, honor and integrity, and collaboration. And then finally, our High Quality Work Goal, as in EL education school, we use the Expedition format, which is a project-based learning format that encourages students to produce work that matters. And so this year, our goal is to support students in increasing their complexity, the authenticity, and the craftsmanship of their work, particularly through writing.
So what best practices do we utilize at School 8 to help us to move those agendas forward? The first thing we utilize is the EL Education ELA modules. We're also doing, as you heard with the expeditions, but project-based learning. We use a lot of data, data that allows us to make projections to see how we feel our students will do, why we use that data to help our students move forward, and which students we really need to kind of give a little extra push to. We use response to intervention to help go through that, now known as the Multi-Tierred System of Supports. Technology, one-to-one, grades 3 through 8, iPads, Chrome boxes, you name it, we're using it. Behavioral intervention programs, both for our students designated as special education as well as those students that are not. We use student-led conferencing, which is part of the EL model, where we allow our students to lead the conversation and not our teachers. Our teachers are there to guide the learning, our students lead the learning. We use expeditions, as we said, and we provide feedback to our staff, walkthroughs as often as we possibly can, giving learning pieces for our staff, nonevalutive. And we use Team Time daily. Every day, our students start with two smiling faces, and they build relationships so that they can feel comfortable when they come to school, and it helps them to start their day and end their day.
Hi. So yes, so one of the things that we've been working really hard on at School Number 8 is building our social emotional supports to support the whole student. So, you know, we have a list of the things that we kind of have been proud of, but the bottom line is it's all about developing a common language. So we use the Second Step Program for our social emotional learning. Honestly, I don't think it matters, you know, what program you're using, the fact that we're using it in every single classroom from pre-K through 8 means that all of our students have the same language for problem solving, for identifying feelings, and that's what we're all about. We are proud to be partners with The Rock Restorative, again, working with, you know, identifying the feelings behind behaviors, encouraging students to use peaceful problem-solving skills and communication. We, like Andy already talked about, Team Time, we're all about relationship building. Research has shown that when students feel strong relationships with at least even just one person at school, they do better academically, and that's what we're trying to build. We partner with the Center for Youth Services to run our cooldown zone. We call it cooldown zone, other schools call it the help zone, but we've been working with them for several years now. We now have students requesting them as opposed to us saying, you need to go to the cooldown zone. Our kids are saying, we have a problem, can we do a circle in the cooldown zone? So that's been real positive for us. We have, our staff members are being trained in therapeutic crisis intervention. That is, I'm pretty sure it's a district thing, and we are proud to participate. I'm a certified trainer, and we roll that out to our teachers so that they're better able to address not only the behaviors, but the reasons for the behaviors, the feelings behind them, so that, again, we're building relationships and solving problems peacefully. And then lastly, we're really making an effort to be trauma-informed. I know that's a big buzzword, but again, it's more of the same thing, a common language focused on the feelings, the reasons behind the behaviors, not just the behaviors. And because of all of these things put together over the last couple of years, we've seen a 77% decrease in out-of-school suspensions, and that's fabulous, we're really proud of that. We still have students that unfortunately are assigned to out-of-school suspension, but the way we look at that is a time for our staff to refocus, rebuild, put new things in place. We don't use the suspension as the consequence, we use the suspension as a planning period so that things will be better when the students come back, and that's it.
I have not been at School 8 since the beginning of the receivership, but I did come two years ago, and my focus primarily has been special education. So in looking at our special ed, we really worked hard to, upon arriving at School 8, we had multi-level special classes. The goal was to create all single, single grade level. In doing so, we then aligned all of our special education teachers with their grade-level general ed peers, so that they were planning on a weekly basis with their colleagues, having discussions, looking at data. We have worked hard to increase parent engagement, and there's a few parent pieces on some of the bullets, but primarily with our 8-1-2 programming that we have at School 8, many of the students that we get are coming from other buildings. So we work hard to develop, fix, maintain relationships and communication with our families. We do so using, we started community circles in our classrooms where we invite parents, family members, staff. Dr. Aquino even came one time. Where we have issues in the building, issues between students and, student to student, student to adults, and we work together to collaborate and fix that as a group as an alternative to suspensions. We worked hard to find the right teaching teams in these classrooms, whether it's support staff, paraprofessionals, teaching assistants, teachers. And we worked hard to have those teams remain together for the, for the past two years so that they could develop relationships and continue their good work. And in the summertime, we work hard to reach out to all of our families that are new to us, make communications, invite families into the building, and start developing relationships with those families that are new to us.
So back to our partnership with EL Education. This partnership began officially in the 2010-2011 year, and so we've come a long way as a result of that partnership with EL Education, formerly Expeditionary Learning. I've already sort of discussed the work plan goals, so I won't go through those again. Additionally, that leadership goal that really guides this team, and thinking about how we're going to continue to move our school forward. On top of that, there is ongoing professional learning at School Number 8. We believe strongly in teachers being lifelong learners, and so we have some structures in place that support that. We have grade-level meetings twice weekly with our grade-level teaching teams. They alternate, one week will be a data-driven meeting, and then the following week will be focused on EL education practices. And that has been ongoing, and we base that work off of the work plan goals as well as whatever needs we see that arise. On top of that, we use our early release days, one coming up tomorrow, and our superintendent conference days to use EL practices. Through our professional learning, we often ask our teachers to put on their student hats. We model the practices we'd like to see in the classroom during our professional learning so that teachers can see those practices in action, experience them from the mind of a student, and then implement them into their own classrooms. On top of that, we work directly with EL Education. We have consultant coaches that come monthly, working with our teachers in grades 3 through 8, specifically focused on implementing the EL Education ELA modules, which are the backbone of our ELA curriculum. We also always have three days of summer work. It's not mandatory, but everybody comes, and it's really powerful for our teach, team to get together in the summer and really think about where we're going for the year. And then finally, the regional and national conferences that EL Education runs, we actually had a number of teachers attend the national conference this year as presenters. They created masterclasses that were accepted by EL Education, and so they presented to teachers and staff from all over the country. So that, that's something we're very proud of. So again, that ongoing professional learning is something that has allowed us to continue to grow.
Another partnership that I'm going to talk about is our partnership with Genesee Community Charter School. It's the first ever district charter partnership, ever. Our K-2 teachers participate in this partnership with the teachers from Genesee. They do guided peer observations and debrief monthly. So what that means is, is that the Genesee teachers come to our school and observe our teachers and give them feedback, and then the next month, our teachers go there and do the same. They are working with the EL Education Reading Foundations Skills Curriculum, and we have seen a tremendous amount of growth. I have never in my role in six years seen so many students reading by the end of first grade, so that is super exciting. so that is super exciting. We also have collaborative professional learning opportunities with them. We do a retreat, a very intensive retreat based on primary literacy in the summer. They always partner on our early release days, and we have a shared primary literacy coach, and she is an expert in what we're doing right now. This, unfortunately, is our final year of the dissemination grant with Genesee, but we have a plan sketched out to continue our partnership, so I'm excited for that.
And I want to add something there. In response to the concerns we've had district-wise as far as budget, we've actually planned already with GCCS to have a training here in Rochester in January to try to prevent us having to spend money to go somewhere. Let's have it here, right? Let's get smart and use our resources, because we have a lot of good stuff here. Okay, who's next? Because I want to be honorable for my 15 minutes.
All right. You guys have me for the next three slides, but I will be very quick. School Number Eight is a community school. This is our first year as a fully functioning community school. Last year was our planning year, where we did our comprehensive needs assessment. On this slide, just put a handful of our partners. We have probably three times this amount, but these were some that we had wanted to highlight, especially Rochester Rotary. This is the 25th year of partnership with School Number Eight, something we're very proud of, and we're going to be celebrating next month. The YMCA, which runs our after-school program and does a very wonderful job with it in the building, really always have to recognize them as well. Couple of our new ones. We have started a new partnership with Hillside Health Homes, as the other community schools in the district have, and we were lucky enough to have a very wonderful case manager placed there, and she is getting referrals weekly. Case load's filling up to the point, we may actually get another one soon, which is nice, it's showing that we're utilizing what's in the community. And our Villa of Hope is our newest partnership also. We are trying to utilize the community to get some mental health services, supports, and counseling into the building. The next slide talks a little more about that. Our Student and Family Support Center, we have provided 133 referrals to service providers to date. Those are out-of-school services for families and students. We're trying to get some of those services into the building as well, to really support what we're doing. But our big goal is to break down the barriers, as everyone else has talked about, getting to know our students, our families, what they need, and what's keeping them from being successful, what's keeping them from getting to school every day. And we really, we want to knock the barriers out, not just for the students, but also for the parents, as we help support them in getting services they need as well. So our community school initiatives from our needs assessment, we came up with three development plan priorities. Our first, which was student attendance. In the four years as we've been working to come off of receivership, our attendance has gone from 85% up to last year, we finished the year at 89.9%.
Almost 90.
So we're close. We're close. We are still hovering between that 89 and 90% this year, and we've instituted an attendance team also, where weekly, we sit and meet and really look at not just our chronic and severe chronic absentees, but also those kids in that middle range to figure out, how do we get them in? And once again, we're going to determine the barriers, and how can we help, how can we support. A big thing we do is home visits. We get out into the homes, we see what the families need, we let them know how much we care by showing our face and not just saying, "Hey, come and show up to school for this meeting." We really want to make sure we're out in the community. Second is our parent engagement and involvement, which also goes to a lot of our home visits, making those face-to-face meetings and getting more families and parents involved. And the third is our mental health supports, as we talked about, and having that, the new Villa of Hope partnership will hopefully give us a lot more. Just three quick things we wanted to highlight that our community school's doing this year. Our part, our new partnership with Hillside Health Homes, which has been wonderful. We have now started a clothing pantry, and it is up and functioning, and we're pretty much, clothes are going out every day, whether it's students that need them. We did a big Thanksgiving food basket thing with Rotary, and I think I put it on like 10, 10 straight meeting agendas, so now whenever I'm talking about community schools, I hear, I hear Thanksgiving food baskets, because I kind of overdid it, so that was, yeah. So, so the clothing pantry is wonderful. We also have been giving it to families in transition, and that goes along with our family care baskets. When we find out we have a family in transition, they're homeless, and even some that have just moved or are in a shelter, we provide a family care basket that has a lot of those items that perhaps food stamps, stamps don't cover. We have our soap, our shampoo, our toothpaste, our toothbrushes, as well as, you know, if they're little ones, too, even below school-age students, we have some clothes and some other things that they're going to need as well that we include in this. So, really trying to wrap our arms, not just around our students, but around the entire family and really around the community. That's, that's been our goal this year.
So, I think we did it under 15 minutes, I think, but I want to say thank you for being kind enough to flex this time so that the whole team could participate. And the question often is asked, "Well, how'd you do it?" Well, we did it together, because we're stronger together than we are apart. And I'm really grateful, because, and I'm, I'm very transparent, as you know. I gave my retirement letter today, and very bittersweet, 34 glorious years together. But you know what? Probably the most challenging and most intensive growth for me was being principal at Number Eight School, especially as a receivership school. Talk about walking into something without a clue, right? Here you go, go. We had eight days, and we opened a school. I'm very grateful, because you pushed me to limits that I didn't know was possible for myself, but with that, I was able to bring all these folks with me and move our school together. So thank you, folks. I appreciate you. Thanks, team. I appreciate you. We're done.
Laurel? Yeah, Laurel, would you mind coming back up? I've got some questions and just want to...
Oh, there should be questions. Yeah, good. I love it.
Yeah. Just, I, I want to really just thank you for the work that you've done, because I remember going over there, as you know...
Me too.
Last year, year before, and when we had a black social worker, female social worker, to challenge a parent, and the parent told her to go and F herself. And she was right in doing that, because we have a parent, a young parent, urban parent, who was working with her child...
Yes.
Peeling in orange. A moment of bonding. And you have a black female social worker that says, "Don't you do that," right? I see it on television. So I go to the school and try on the, I think your first day or your training day...
Yeah, it was my first day.
To try to talk with the parents about, talk to your, the staff about why that was inappropriate for this, and I'm saying, black female social worker to do that, right? So then it makes the news, and I'm lying about, I don't want people in the district. Of course, you always know, I say, "If you don't like, love our children, you don't need to be here."
At the back.
You know, I don't have any problem with that. I always say that. But in this case, I did not say that in the way that they said it, I said it. So I'm glad that we've moved from that kind of era to where we are now, when you've got a team that really understands our kids and who are working with our families, because if you don't understand that you may have some young families that are going to respond that way, particularly when they are, are disrespected in a bonding moment with their child, that's what you're going to get. And so, I, I, I just want to commend you and the work that has been done. One of the things that stood out with me is this term, honor.
Yep.
That really, and, and, and I'll tell you, if we can have that attribute throughout the district, throughout the culture of the district, I think that we would have a complete turnaround...
I agree.
...in terms of academic achievement, because it means so much that when we highly esteem our children, when we highly esteem our families, and then, of course, when, in terms of staff, that we're highly esteeming each other. I think that if we can infuse that within the organizational culture, I think that's going to take us farther than we could ever anticipate. And it doesn't impact the budget, Mr. Superintendent, you know, when you, with honor. One of the things that, and I'm so excited about, the, the 77% decrease in out-of-school suspensions. But I want to ask you one thing about a culture and character that was on your EL Education partnership...
Sure.
...a slide, because when that first hit me, it sort of made me think about, we're talking about culture in the sense of, of, of racial culture, and then a character is associated with that. And I, I don't, I don't think that's what you meant, because what is, what I, what is, the implication of that for me is, is that somehow with a culture that's separate from the main culture, that there's some issues with that.
Yeah, it's a, it is part of our school culture, is what we're referring to.
Okay.
The climate of our school, and we received our data today from the district survey that everyone completed, and wow, I mean, it, it's grown immensely. And Commissioner Elliott, I guess the other thing I'd like to say to you is honor and integrity is often how we framework our conversations with children, you know, when we're having a concern. And the other thing I'd like to share is, one of the things I asked of every single person in our school was to be an owner and not a renter. And I mean that. I have given 14, 15 hours a day with pleasure, but my expectation is, is I'm modeling the same deal that you're going to give back. And so keep pushing us, because that's how it needs to be, so we make things right for all of our children.
How's your parent involvement now?
My parent involvement is good. You know, I would always want more, because I'm greedy, right? I mean, don't, don't we all? But, yeah, and we keep poking at it, right? And I know that Mark has worked a lot with the community. Every time we get a parent in, we try to grab him for a survey or a feedback or join us to do something for our school. We just had a wonderful turnout. We had our 24-foot salad bar, and it's standing room only. I mean, they come, and they come for our E-nights and conferencing, so it's coming.
Everybody in Rochester comes for food.
True that.
But I, I'd just like to thank you for your leadership. I'm sorry to see that you're going to, that it is bittersweet that you're going to be leaving, because I unders, I know very well your exuberance and your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
And I want to thank the staff for, for their commitment to our children. You know, because I sit at this dais, and, and I, I really do, if you will, trouble the water, because it's necessary that we trouble the water, and that you have taken on that from this board and, and did this kind of work, and we really do appreciate it. So thank you very much, and thank you to the team.
Yeah, thank you, team, and I'm humbled. And I mean that with a lot of gratitude. Thank you all.
No, no, stay right, stay right there. Real quick, Mr. Toy. I, I just have some comments.
Commissioner Lebron, hit it.
First of all, I want to thank the staff, too, and thank you as well for your leadership. I just want to attest, and you and I always have this conversation, so I started at School Eight right before you came, then we had summer break, and then came into, and I was actually at that meeting, Commissioner Elliott, I was one of the... With our new principal. And I will say, I, I am always amazed by the turnaround at School Number Eight. When I was originally at School Eight, it was, we had chiefs that were down there, deputy superintendents that were literally spending their time at School Number Eight to try to get some control of the school. You know, you would walk the halls, you couldn't ever have anything posted up on the wall. There's just a lot of incidences, a lot of things that were happening at School Eight that was really heartbreaking to watch as well. And so I can be a witness to attest that from day one, the toy came in there with a very different attitude and mindset, and even other adults and teachers and educators who had been there for years, who I think were just feeling so burnt out and stressed out from the environment, the culture, the environment of the school climate, really felt motivated and, and re-engaged in this work. And that was just amazing to watch. I ended up leaving, going to another school, but I always come back to School Eight years later, and even now, I was just at their Lion King production, which was amazing...
Our first.
And their first ever. And there were lots of parents there. It was like, it was, I, I went to the last showing of it, and it was like 1:30, and it was still lots of parents there. And that was impressive, too, that parent engagement piece. So I know you always want more, but even from where you guys started to where you guys are now, I can attest to the amazing work and environment there. And also, speaking to former students, I still have a lot of students that are at School Eight, and I still have a lot of families that I'm still connected to there, and they all tell me that it is a different culture and mindset for them to walk into the school, to feel that they're being heard, that they really feel love from staff. That is just amazing, amazing, and I just want to thank you guys all, seriously, from the bottom of my heart, for all the work that you do. And I do want to say that it is, it starts at leadership, the toy, and for me, it really started with your leadership. So I want to also put this out as a best practice, that you made sure that you went into every single classroom, every single day, especially in the beginning, to check in, and sometimes twice in a day, just checking in. "Hey, I'm just checking in, see how's it going?" And that you would check kids, too, in a really loving way, like, "Hey, you know you're not supposed to do that." You go right back to this. So I just want to thank you, seriously, and I'm so sad that you're leaving, and, but I look forward to the plan that we hopefully can get in place to keep it going at School Eight. So thank you guys so, so much.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Before I try to escape again, guys, do you need anything else? Thank you. Again, humbled and very grateful.
Thank you very much again. A lot of good best practices there. Let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is speakers addressing an agenda item, and we have Howard Eagle.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have to say to you, when I look at your agenda online sometimes, it just, it makes me sick. Just looking at one resolution, 804, you're being asked tonight to vote to approve $18,060, $17,900, $12,600, $3,600, $12,000, $3,543, $9,138, on and on and on, about around $104,000 for all kinds of so-called services and so forth. And I'm certain that you don't even know where some of that stuff is, but we'll probably watch you just pass the resolution. Just, I, I look at it, and I just, what comes to my mind is like, more money, more money. And speaking of more money, we read somewhere in the newspaper that you set aside in, in your budget, 200,000 plus for the new superintendent position. We saw that yesterday you announced that the fourth, you arrived at the fourth finalist, and you're coming to town next week and so forth. And, and what we came to say tonight is, I'm here as a parent and also as a representative of the Take It Down Plan and Committee Faith Community Alliance Movement for Anti-Racist Ministry in Action. So that's the "we" I'm talking about. We came to say that we know your process is bogus. The process that you use to choose the poor people is bogus. Here's evidence. Here's this one little piece of evidence that is bogus. You tell me, how is it you can do a national search and end up interviewing somebody like Leslie Myers from Brockport? I think she's really from Pittsburgh, but she's working as superintendent in Brockport. But a man, the caliber of William Keller, who we know applied, doesn't get an interview. How does that happen? We know part of it, Commissioner White, we know you don't like him, because you don't, no, you don't like Dr. Keller. We know that. But, no, we do know that. We know it. We're not just blowing smoke. We know what we're talking about. We thought that he had at least one cheerleader on, under the board. We know Commissioner Elliott was really supportive of him when he was interim superintendent in this, in this district, but I guess that has changed also. But, but the point is, we know the process is bogus, and we want to say to you quite frankly, you're not going to bring these people in here next weekend, and everything's going to go smoothly and so forth. I just want to let you know, that's not how it's going to happen. Commissioner White, I have to tell you, you were really disgusting in the press conference today, with you and the superintendent, trying to convince the media, and I think some of them are dumb enough to believe it, the way you were trying to spin the facts, trying to convince them that the state commissioner hasn't indicted you again. And I know you don't like that word, but it was her word. She used indictment. She indicted you again. Said that the plans that you put forth to address Dr. Aquino's report are nonsensical. She didn't use the word nonsensical, but it means the same thing. She didn't use the word nonsensical, but it means the same thing. She said they weren't adequate. One thing that really stuck out is, she said you tried to talk about, one of your recommendations would be addressed through your strategic plan, which you don't have. You don't have a strategic plan, but you're telling the commissioner you're gonna address something through the strategic plan. That's one thing that stuck out. But, oh, and by the way, I'm done, yes, sir, but you do know this, right? You know one of your candidates that you chose has a lawsuit pending against him, right? The one with, the one who some people say has a funny name? That's what some people say he has a funny name, hard to pronounce. You, you know who I'm talking about. Has a lawsuit pending against him. If you don't know that, check it out, for allegedly abusing an employee down there in Nashville, you know what I'm talking about. So, so what we came to ask you for is a meeting. We need a meeting.
You're done, you're gonna finish?
I'm, I'm done, I'm finished, but we need a meeting with you. We want to sit with you and revisit this process. Can, can we do that? And we have to do it before next weekend.
Are you finished?
Yes, I'm asking you a question.
And I'm not gonna answer it?
Oh, yeah, that's right, I forgot. Never talk back to people.
We never answer questions from the media.
Never talk back to people, that's a shame. Never talk, no, 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 you don't, I know, I just forgot, I had a lapse in memory, you know, I'm, the mind is not what it used to be. But anyways, if you don't hear from us, I mean, we don't hear from you, you'll hear from us, but we hope, what we're hoping is, we don't have to wait until next weekend to hear from us. We would rather it not happen that way. We would rather sit with you and talk about revisiting the process.
Thank you. All right, next we have... Give me one second here, folks. We have speakers not addressing an agenda item. We're gonna begin with Cynthia Clay, and she will be filed by LaShelle Hall.
Go ahead, ma'am.
All right, my name is Cynthia Clay. I came to speak about racial bias. My child has been basically bullied by a racially motivated teacher and her friends at number 39 school, Ms. Diane Hamilton, the music teacher. She, in fact, pushed and shoved him, and he said that he felt that she was trying to antagonize him and get him to hit her. Now, this from a 10-year-old. Now, we had a meeting, nothing came of it. We were supposed to have another meeting, where we were supposed to get together, and I figured, well, maybe they just don't get along, okay? I'm trying to give her the benefit of the doubt, no. Come to find out, this is a pattern that she has. And the school district and the teachers' union have just let it go on year after year. She doesn't like anybody of color. If you're darker than a brown paper bag, then you get put out of her classroom on a daily basis. I read Dr. Aquino's report, I'm still reading it. It's like we've thrown the baby out with the bathwater. You keep these racist teachers in positions just because they have tenure? How dare you? How dare you? My child and any other child does not deserve to be beaten or abused and made to feel bad because of their color. You have these teachers that come into this city where they can make more money with our children than they can in the suburbs, but they don't understand how to deal with our children. Our children sometimes aren't fed, our children sometimes don't have two parents in the house. If you can't deal with the children, then you should not be dealing, you shouldn't have a job. And before you hire these people, you need to give each and every one, not white, not black, anybody that comes for a job, they need to have a psychiatric evaluation, because some of them don't know how to work around children. Now, you don't come around my child and hurt my child. And then there was supposed to be a meeting for she and I and the principal and Dr. Green, supposed to be a meeting. Dr. Green called me, the meeting was set for 8:30. I said, there's no one to put my children on the bus at 8:30, I need it for 10 o'clock. Somehow, this meeting still stayed at 8:30, which benefited that teacher and not me. Now, how in the world am I gonna leave my children to come to a meeting with this racist woman that put her hands on my teacher? And oh, by the way, nobody called the police on her. I was the one that called CPS on her, and I still haven't found out anything about it. I want a copy of that report, I want a copy of that investigation, I want a copy of those. She has other students, other students in that school have filled out a survey on her, where she has systematically gone after black and brown-skinned children. If you're darker than a brown paper bag, she has a problem with you. The first day one child came to her class, she put him out. It's my first day, how can you have a problem with me my first day? But if you're racist, and I'm calling a spade a spade, she is racist, I got no closure. I came down here at 10, I, okay, 10:09, and I got nothing. I got told, oh, we had our meeting, we called you, we called you. Well, because of my job, my phone had too many pictures on it for my job, I couldn't receive any messages, any phone calls. Okay, my phone didn't show it. Finally, I erased all that, I get the messages. But how dare you have a meeting, and you didn't support me, the parent? How dare you? I get nothing? I'm here supporting my child, fighting the best way I can for my children. And what do I get from the city school district? What kind of help do I get? I see nothing. This woman got, got a paid leave, a paid vacation, and will come back next year the way it seems.
Ms. Clay?
I want a letter of discipline, put in her file, so that wherever she goes, they see the type of person she is. And then I get told, we can't do that. Oh, yes, you can. Oh, yes, you can, and you will, I will demand it.
Ms. Clay, what I, what I want to suggest is, we have, how we set up the school district is we have the superintendent, the deputy superintendents, there's two of them, and then we have chiefs of schools. So I just whispered to the superintendent, is there somebody here who can talk to you directly today? Because we can't get it, none of us can respond, because it's a personnel matter, law does, law doesn't allow that. But you can, go in that hallway, get the number and direct information for somebody who you can talk to and see this thing through. And they report directly to the superintendent who reports to the board. This is the first, we have heard of it, but if you talk to one of these chiefs, I don't know, who would be her chief of schools? Which school?
She don't want to deal with you.
It's school number 39. I am livid.
39.
I said I am livid. I'm tired of being pushed around. The first, the second meeting with this teacher, this teacher purposely didn't call her union rep, so she doesn't meet with her, without her union rep. So that's to wear me down. I am not gonna be worn down. Now, the second meeting with the board, where I was to meet the teacher, now they schedule it at 8:30. I'm here, I'm looking stupid, I'm being made to look like a uncaring parent, because I'm not here for a meeting about my child. No, uh-uh, not having it.
See that gentleman, see that gentleman right there waving his hand? Would you go talk to him and give him all the details, so that he can share it with the superintendent? All right? Well, this is a, Mr. Eagle, Mr. Eagle, Mr. Eagle. This is a parent in distress. Ma'am, ma'am, Ms. Clay, would you go speak to that gentleman right there? Thank you. Next is LaShelle Hall, Ms. Hall, filed by Fred Tanksley. Is Ms. Hall here? Okay, I didn't see you back there.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, everyone. I'm here because the district would like to cut out home instruction, and without home instruction, I would not have a high school graduate. My son graduated with a Regent's diploma out of home instruction, because certain parts of the district chose, chose not to help my son with his needs, they chose not to help him academically, they stereotyped him to, like, he has a big old folder of reports, so when the district kicked him out, he had nowhere to go. So in between being in transition, home instruction is the only thick reason why I have a high school graduate in my house. He has a Regent's diploma, and his mother does not have a Regent's diploma, because I fought for my child. Mr. Mark Gamble, thank you so much for believing in my child when the district threw my child to the streets. Ms. Mazola, I didn't forget about you. I appreciate you and your math skills. Thank you. And my reason for coming up here is to tell you guys, if you cut out home instruction, they're the best part of the district, the best part. My child has been long-term suspended, the district sends him to Hart Street. Who's at Hart Street? The same kids that he was, he was fighting. So now my child is in harm's way. My child is getting suspended, because 20 people attacked him. Yes, you better defend yourself. You better defend yourself. If you do nothing else, you make it home to your mother, because I am coming full-fledged about my child. My child is currently in MCC, you guys. His first semester. The district tried to break my child. Mr. Laniac at school 16, he called CPS on me, had CPS at my door. I, I, when the CPS lady came in, I said, you must have the wrong house. She said, oh, no, I have the right house. I said, well, you can't tell me who made this anonymous complaint, but let me tell you how Mr. Laniac and his vice principal attacked my child. Mr. Laniac had my child in his office with another kid that he did not like and told him to fight. I'm gonna record it, and then I'm gonna call the police. These are the people that you have controlling our children. And then you want to, you want to ship out good people that have a personal interest in my child's goals and his aspirations? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Gamble, you have a wonderful husband. He has, and if you guys can get a little God in you, you could go a long way. Instead of getting stuck in your title, in your position, feeling like you can't do this, or you don't have to do that, let's push it over here. I've been to the center of dispute several times with the district. Everything they promised me, they lied. The only thing that I got out of those meetings, besides their failure to help, was a chance to get my son at home instruction. And at home instruction is where my son found success. He found a support system. He, he found positive people that truly cared about him. When my child didn't show up to school, they're at my door about my child. That means they care. They're showing up, and I appreciate them. And if you got, since the district, I'm not saying in Hall, the ones that decided to throw my child away, you don't need no pay increase, give it to people that are actually working for us, because I work hard. I built my son's confidence, and I sent him over there to 16 school, and they tried to destroy my child for everything he was. And as his mother, whether he's eight or 80, I will stand by him, because God says, as long as I speak the truth, as long as I speak the truth, I will be heard. So you can hurt in your hurts, hold your pocketbooks, whatever it is you gotta do, but you will pay for the choices that you make here on this earth.
Next would be Fred Tanksley and Donald Bartolo. Let me, let me indicate and remind folks that the buzzer rings to limit your amount of speaking time to three minutes, and it exists for the purpose of respecting the people that are behind you. So I would ask that you comply with the rules, speak for your three minutes, it's not the only opportunity to speak to the Board of Education. You can do that by direct phone, you can do that by email, but I would ask again, that when you hear that buzzer, that you begin to wrap it up. Mr. Tanksley?
Good evening. How much longer, Rochester? They say change is going to come for decades. The critical question is, when will we see it and know that we need it now, to the point that we will aggressively act on it? If you order something and they give you the wrong item, you take it back and demand what you ordered, why would you continue to allow this body to not provide the very service that we charge them to do with no consequences? For these individuals before us, they work for us, the community. We don't work for them. Now, to allow them to feed our children a racist culture which is not their own? Fact, for years, they have not acted in the best interest of its taxpayers, parents, or students. How crazy is it that we have all known to dismay and the outcry from community activists that we have not come in a unified community demanding change? For we paid upwards of $200,000 for a report to tell us what we have known for decades. Fact, the distinguished educators said, when the chancellor was here, that for that expense report, that they could not make the board adhere to it, that it was just recommendations. Who in the world pays that much money for something that cannot be implemented? Back to my question, how much longer, Rochester? How insane is it that these before us would bring four people that had, that they chose to be a superintendent without involving the community? Who is it that you expect to sit and not have a relationship with for a few hours, and then you're gonna give your God-given treasure to them to mold their minds for the rest of their life? That would be like you meeting somebody and handing them the keys to your house and saying, hold these until I come back. Who would do that? But now you expect us to give you our treasures to people that we don't even know? We had no value in the process that was intended to be. Why is, how can you all sit there and say that you have the best interests and you want community input, and then you don't involve us? How can you have a process that works around the values of the parents of the children that you say that you care so much about? I don't know if any of you actually have stake in the game, like the parents do in this community. Would you send your children to the schools with the involvement of the people that you have? I want to end with this last quote. This is what I read in one of the team members from the superintendent, their bio. My goal in developing the 2017-18 budget is to create a modified zero-based process, one that is more inclusive and that allows us to make tough financial decisions based on educational priorities that are clearly defined and fully understood by the district community. Who are you talking about when you say district community? Because we don't know where our money's going.
Thank you, Mr. Tanksley. Donald Walling will be filed by Donald Bartolo. Sorry.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Donald Bartolo, I live five minutes from here. Two of my grandchildren are in the city school district. I've lived in Rochester for 20 years. I'm a grandfather, a father, a teacher, a principal, a superintendent, and a literacy But tonight, I represent the Rochester Coalition for Public Education. Now, that is a group made up of 45 public school parents, teachers, teacher leaders, administrators, college professors, researchers, and community members. I would like to make two points with you, just two. First, I read yesterday that you have selected four candidates for our new superintendent. One is an assistant superintendent. Two are school chiefs, not to be confused... Not to be confused with superintendents of schools. They're not. And one of them has a position I never heard of, but apparently it's growing. It's called one turnaround, it's called turnaround officer. Now, our group was very disappointed that none of the school leaders have ever been a superintendent. And as far as I could read, one of them has never been a school administrator. My second point, you never interviewed Dr. William Calla. Bill has been a superintendent rural school, Pembroke, suburban, Fairport, and an urban school, this one. He served as the interim school superintendent in 2007. On behalf of the Rochester Coalition for Public School Education, we are very disappointed that he was not given an interview. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartalo. Is Donald Walling here? Oh, Ms. Walling, come on up. He will be filed by Candace Rubin. No, that was him.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I am David Walling. I am a retired school principal. I currently work with the Rochester City School District Committee on Racial Equality Advocacy Leadership Team, REO. I'm a member of MAMA, which is the Movement for Anti-Racist Ministry and Action, have been for three years. And I am a community resident. And community input is really essential to procuring a qualified superintendent. Yet the board continually sidesteps this responsibility in quest of holding control over the process to select who they want, not what the community wants. I do thank you, though, that we have had some quarterly forums that some, I say some, of you have participated in. That's been sponsored by the Take It Down Committee, Faith Community Alliance, and MAMA, the coalition I am a part of. Yet we objected to the current process of selection of a superintendent for the Rochester City School District. We preferred the community advisory model, actually what you put forth, Mr. White, which was unfortunately voted down by this board. The model brought into the process, the board selected community members to engage in the whole process. That is a disappointment. And now there's another. We are aware that Dr. William Calla, previous interim principal here at the Rochester City School District, previous superintendent of Fairport Schools, applied for the position but was not even kept, was kept from moving forward. We disdain that oversight. This is a quality applicant. Many people see that. It's been already brought out. An engaged community in the process from start to finish would have, likely have avoided this problem. Here is a person that is a community member with experience in the entire community and in this city and was denied participation. Now, it's interesting because on a personal note and having been a school counselor and a principal, I have personally followed Dr. Calla for years and his courageous tenure in several school districts in many different ways. He's a hero and he's made stands. He represents the qualities that a superintendent needs to have, but he wasn't even considered. We feel, I feel, that he should still be considered as a community option. A community option which you folks have denied. So we are looking to have this person brought forth. I'm not the only one who feels this way. There is a community that feels this way. I am sure many folks in the audience can recall Dr. Calla's work here and in this county. Now is the time to speak up and support him and move forward, even though your process is what it is. He is indeed a proven candidate, a community candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walling. Candace Rubin will be filed by Deborah Green.
Here I am again. I'm hearing an increasing mantra around the district to the melody of "All Kids Belong" in a school building, regardless of their circumstances or level of incapacitation from childbirth, chronic illnesses, whatever. And I guess nobody promoted that news to the Brighton School District, which has a unit of twelve home hospital teachers. They have ten percent of the number of our students with more than half the number of home hospital teachers proposed for our unit for next year, because that's twenty-one. The three percent of American students who are homeschooled and graduate from college at a higher rate have also not heard the mantra. But I am digressing and I don't want to be so negative. So, but I am gonna make an important point about liability issues. We have many students with mental health disorders, schizophrenia, and bipolar among them, and a number who are adjusting to medication or in the initial stages of diagnosis. And I would ask whether it's responsible to release these young people into one of the most stressful environments, that's a school or program with other young people at this vulnerable age, without being fully confident of their ability to function. And about two months ago, one of our home hospital teachers, students, was placed in a Hart Street program. And on the Friday before break, she had a loud disagreement with another student, left the building while being pursued by two teachers who, in desperation, called the police when they were unable to catch up with her, to ensure that she was transported home safely. The girl was cuffed and taken home in a police car, but she later escaped the home and was missing until the next morning. Now she's been suspended for five days and ultimately, her education was interrupted and her safety was endangered. We should be conscious of those kind of liability issues and make sure that students do not return prematurely to a school environment where they're not gonna be successful. And our program is a solid link between the district and community, the ultimate community school. For years, we've entered homes, formed relationships with families, and often co-taught siblings who were truant from school that day. Just today, I went into a house where the ninth grader, the eighth grader, and the first grader were both truant from school. And I told the first grader to pull up a chair and her sister and I worked to teach her and we made it into a, it was true different, truly differentiated instruction. And I did, did, yeah, I did the, even the, as I said, just said, we did it this morning. And we simply asked for the restoration of our jobs to provide our students and families with a safety net they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. Deborah Green will be filed by Laura Tia Manero.
Good evening.
Excuse me for one second. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm just reading the list of names that I was given. At the end, when we're finished, if there is a parent who signed up maybe and didn't get their name on the list, we can let them speak. But let us, let's finish this with this. I'm sorry, go ahead, ma'am.
Yes, good evening. My name is Deborah Green. I am a teacher with the home hospital unit. My purpose this evening is to emphasize the true value and absolute necessity of this district's home hospital program and the serious consequences of any reductions to that program. A significant portion of the hundreds of children we serve each year are assigned to home hospital teachers because of a wide range of medical concerns. What you need to realize and understand is that each of these children's medical conditions is significant enough to necessitate instruction in the child's home and often in a hospital room. You must understand that placing these children in a school building while they are dealing with their illnesses and conditions is simply not an appropriate placement. In fact, placing these children in school buildings, thereby going against the recommendations of licensed medical professionals, would undoubtedly exacerbate their already serious conditions. Home hospital teachers have for many years taught children with multiple physical and intellectual disabilities. Some so severe that even Mary Carriola Children's Center is not an option for them. Home hospital teachers have taught non-ambulatory children who require around-the-clock respiratory support and whose physically, whose physical fragility and deeply compromised immune systems cannot withstand the daily exposure to outdoor climate during multiple transports throughout the course of a single day. Furthermore, these same children often end up with further complications after having repeated close contact with multiple people in a school environment. The obvious and logical solution is for these children to be taught at home or in their hospital rooms, environments that are the safest and most beneficial for them. Other medical students serviced by the home hospital program are children coping with and hopefully recovering from serious injuries and surgeries. Still others are children with chronic illnesses that render them unable to attend their home schools for extended lengths of time. In the home hospital program, they are able to continue their schooling from experienced, intrepid, and dedicated teachers that go wherever necessary and adapt to whatever situation presents itself in order to teach lessons in the same core courses these students take at their home schools. Home hospital teachers also teach a continually increasing number of children with serious emotional and mental health disorders. We teach children with panic disorder, personality disorder, and mood disorder of varying degrees. We also teach students who are suffering from acute psychosis. You need to realize and understand that while they are undergoing intensive treatment, these children are safest and more likely to make academic and personal progress when they have school at home. So I leave you with two important questions. First, where would these students, these children, be without a thriving home hospital program? Two, what would you want for your own child? Who, in some way, for more than just a few days, became too ill to leave home for school each day? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubin. Before we continue on with our list, the young lady out in the audience pointed out to me that the person who wanted to speak was a parent. And generally what we do, and I know there's a number of staff members that are waiting to speak, we do take parents first. Now, here, let me just also explain. The reason why we do that is, parents have to get home to their kids. Just for those of you, no, those of you who don't know the rules, we put parents first because we wanted to get them home. But we also have a rule that people have to call in by twelve noon. Sometimes people make calls and they're not recorded and they don't get on my list. Sometimes the names are backwards. So I don't know whether, who's the parent in the classroom?
I called yesterday.
Okay, you called yesterday. So come on up. We're gonna take her now. And you're gonna need to state your name.
I, I don't hate to go after my husband and actually tell him that.
No, go ahead. We, we, let's, let's, let's respect the.
I'm Michelle Smith.
Okay.
And I am a parent.
All right.
So I am here to speak with you this evening also about the home hospital instruction program. And I would like to speak to you about why this program needs to remain a viable program in our community and on this budget. My family has been a part of this program for two years. My children have a disease. It's called myelitis encephalomyelitis. I'll translate that into English. In layman's terms, it is called chronic fatigue syndrome. It is a neuroimmune disease. My children went from, since five years old, competitive cheerleaders, performance dancers, weightlifters, gymnasts, to not being able to go to school. This program services the medically frail children who have a right to education. Children who can't go to school. They want to so badly. They wanna sit in those seats in the classroom. They want to engage with children. They want to be involved in extracurricular activities. But they have no choice. Because like we just heard, these children are too sick. The other subset of, of children that are serviced by this program are young mothers, babies having babies. This program services both the sick children and young mothers. And we've heard of some other children, too, that get serviced. But there's no gaps, right? It allows our kids to keep their education going with no gaps. This is a mission-based program. It is a service by the Rochester City School District. Every night in my house and right before I came, the Rochester City School District is severely beaten down, maligned. Despite of all the hard work that you folks are all doing, it is continually beaten down. This program deserves to be touted, not trimmed. This program, those people that are sitting right there, is everything that this district is doing right. Because it is fostering the future of the city of Rochester. And all children, whether too sick or have babies or have behavioral issues, all of those children have the right to an education, even if it's in their house. I am a businesswoman and I completely understand the budget, right? Whether it is a for-profit organization, a non-for-profit organization, everything comes down to brass tacks. But I am asking you, I am imploring you, please not to look at this program as a line item on a budget. Because these children are the future of our community. I would be honored to speak with any of you individually. As a group, anyone can contact me. The City School District has my, my contact information. Thank you so much for giving me this time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rubin. Laura, I'm gonna, Tia Manero? I probably messed that up. She will be filed by Mark Campbell.
Hello. Firstly, I would like to thank board members, Superintendent Lowengard and distinguished educator, Dr. Jaime Aquino, for giving us the opportunity to speak on behalf of the students, families, and teachers of the home hospital program. My name is Laura Ty Manero and I am also a teacher who works out of the home hospital unit. I am here because I felt it was important to speak to the strengths of our program and hopefully give you a better understanding of the scope of what we do. Like all other schools and programs in the district and around the country, our program continues to evolve and develop best practices that we believe best meet the needs of our students and their families. Our program is unique because we have the capacity to teach our students in a variety of settings and locations. I like to describe what we do as being very similar to what a push-in teacher might do in a more traditional classroom setting. However, because of the special circumstances of the students we teach, our teachers have the opportunity to literally and physically push in to the communities, the neighborhoods, and the homes of the students and families that we work with. Having teachers who work and connect to the communities in which our students live is a positive thing. In some ways, our role as a community-based program takes the idea of a website such as Parent Connect to a whole new level. Instead of virtual connection, home hospital teachers engage our families face-to-face on a regular basis. In essence, we meet and teach our students where they need to be, where they need us to be. You may also not know that in conjunction to the primary home hospital teacher, we also provide resource teachers. also provide resource teachers for students who may, may need additional time or help. These extra hours can help students make up missing Regents Labs or help them to better prepare for their classes and upcoming Regents Math exams, including pre-calculus and calculus. Spanish language teachers are available when the need arises. Our teachers also utilize all of the very same resources and best practices that teachers throughout the district are also tapping into. One of my new best friends is Google Docs and Google Classroom because it allows me the ability to create lessons and worksheets that I can consolidate and use again when necessary. Just recently, one of my students who is taking a journalism class created a survey project where she researched and studied the issue of medical marijuana. She published her ideas on Instagram and created a dialogue with the people who responded to her. This very bright young lady, who is out of school because of medical issues, is also on track and preparing to graduate in June. I have another student who is independently working, is independently creating and publishing interactive stories online and, and dialogues and edits her work with a global audience. She is also a singer-songwriter and has her own personal following online. I also wanted to add that this past January, she also managed to pass her ELA Regents exam with a 90%. I'm just gonna kinda, I know my time is up, so I'm gonna kinda skip here to the end. In many ways, we are an untapped resource, and I am hopeful that you will all reconsider the important and necessary niche we fill. The more you diminish our program and the work we do, the more you diminish the importance of the population of the students we service. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mark Campbell will be filed by Kelly Naruth.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I am also with the home hospital group. My name is Mark Campbell. I, I'm here to relay a couple messages from my parents. The one thing I wanted to say first is that we're in direct contact with a lot of the most needy families in Rochester. They went over perfectly what we deal with, terminally ill, mentally ill, traumatic injuries, autistic disorders. There's two examples I wanna bring to light. One is a family from Puerto Rico that moved here. Their house is destroyed. They had to move to Rochester. Devath brought her family in. Her son is Elnardo, 15-year-old autistic boy. He had nowhere to go. Takes a while to find positions for these children. We all understand that, so that's fine. In the meantime, he needed to be serviced. She was a client of mine. Also a client of mine is Melissa. She has a son Cameron, who also is autistic with a added dash of impulse disorder, okay? She's awesome, my client. And my other client, Ms. Hall, had her son graduate.
Great job.
Yeah. I, I'm bringing a message from Melissa and Devath, the two families. These are the, these are the families with the most needs and the least choices. They both, they all have, both moms have expectations, just like everybody else in this room. And their life, you could say from looking from the outside, their, their, their life is in crisis. They wouldn't say that, but maybe we would. They expect a quality education. These parents hold the City School District responsible for that. And they tell me that, 'cause I sit down with them every day and speak to them about their children, 'cause I'm there every day. They tell me this. I expect this from the city. I expect this from the city. So I'm gonna do the best I can. So what I wanna say is, we work with the families that are most in need in, in the city, and I would hate to see anything happen to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly Naruth.
I gave you my time. Michelle Mazzola.
Just to let you know, we, we don't do that, but tonight I'll make an exception. We don't give time, but go ahead, come on. You only, she only gave you three minutes.
I'm also signing off.
Oh, you are?
I am.
Oh, okay. So you're not speaking at all then? So then we, all right.
Her, her voice is going?
Oh.
So would it be possible for me to take both times now?
No.
Oh, okay.
You must be a math teacher.
I am. I am, yes.
That kind of addition doesn't work here, but do your best to speak to both voices. Thank you.
So, good evening. My name is Michelle Mazzola. I am a secondary math teacher, and I have taught in the home hospital program since 1999. I would like to make some key points here, again, to help everyone understand the importance of the home hospital program and the need to keep this vital program intact without the layoff of any of our teachers. First of all, our program is unique and valuable. We currently function with a skeletal staff since most of our teachers are on the road. We need minimal space to operate our program. We require no classrooms to heat, no security staff, no student transportation, and minimal administration. The efficiency of our program results from years of development, despite a constant turnover of administrators. We continually analyze our operations. We anticipate possible mishaps. We streamline our procedures with the end result that we run a very well-oiled machine. And we deliver student services to a diverse population of students. Second, our current program allows our teachers to target, to target a broad spectrum of student needs. Last year, we served almost 400 students in every grade, every subject, every program, and at every ability level. We have a diversified group of certified teachers who provide instruction from elementary to Regents and AP-level courses. Our ability to match student and teacher is unique and paramount to student success. We have teachers who specialize in working with terminally ill students, cancer patients, pregnant students, young mothers, the emotionally disturbed, with other special education students, as well as students with behavioral difficulties. While some people may have the perception that we only work with suspended students, that is not the case at all. In fact, this year, for example, only four of our students have been suspended students. What is accurate about our program is that we serve a most fragile student population. With students who are often in crisis and without home instruction, they would make no academic progress for a significant period of time. It is the structure and flexibility of this program, as well as the expertise of our teachers, that further the success of those students. Finally, it's teamwork that makes our unit successful. Everything is shared, our knowledge, our experience, our resources, and our dedication to our students. Because we are a cohesive unit, it would be hard to find another group of teachers anywhere with higher morale than ours. Though we take on the most difficult students under the most trying circumstances, we do hold those students and their families in high regard, and we love our jobs. Significant cuts to our program have been made since 2011, and we know that further cuts will be detrimental to the students that we serve. We've worked, worked very hard to develop this little jewel that we call the home hospital program. On behalf of our teachers and especially the students who need us, I ask you not to tear us apart. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our list of speakers. I thank everybody for doing their best to comply with our, within our timeframes. Looking for my. Here it is. Give me one second, folks. Thanks, okay. All right, next item on our agenda is our advisory council reports. We'll begin with the Student Leadership Congress.
The discussion for the SLC meeting on April 24, 2019 included the SLC Annual Educational Student Leadership Conference and elections and recruitment for next year. At the April, at the April SLC meeting, we spoke about our annual educational trip to Washington DC. We will be going on May 25th and return May 28th. Elections for the next Student Leadership Congress will be held on our June, at our June meeting. We have asked current members to recruit new members to replace us as the majority of us, as majority of us are seniors and will be graduating. I attended the Rock Restorative Conference pre-meeting at the Gandhi Institute this past week. We, over there, we met with representatives from other schools and community agencies. We had a group discussion about the event coming up this Saturday. I'll be representing the SLC on a panel discussion at the event. Lastly, there are a couple events in June that we will be attending. These include Family Affair in the Park and the Community Juneteenth Celebration. That concludes my report.
Thank you. You can applaud, that was a good report. Next item on our agenda is the Parent Advisory Council and the Bilingual Education Council. I understand there is no written report and there'll be no oral report today. That would move us to your portion of the agenda, Dan, Superintendent's report.
Thank you. Very quickly, you'll see on the monitors, this is the April update. I wanna first thank Harry and his team. He's been very busy in the recruitment plans. I know we're cutting a number of positions, but that doesn't mean that we still will not need people. I wanna thank Harry for what he and his team have done. We've held three meetings to recruit, and we've got a couple more planned, or we've got three more planned, the 27th, May 4th, and May 11th. The second thing is, we've had a site-based planning team training. We had 170 people show up. We wanna thank Celia, Tim Clibby, Adam Urbansky, Toya Wilson, and Makita Sloan. Again, this is one of those tireless jobs that these folks were involved in because our site-based teams are live and well in our schools. The third thing has to do with our pre-K program. Robin Hooper got an award for the program from New York State Broadcasters Association. Early childhood, as you know, our early childhood program is exemplary, and we wanna thank Robin and congratulate her on her award. And also, two of her employees received awards from the New York Association of Continuing Community Ed. Paul Burke, who's the head of the Oasis Program, could not be here tonight, but Miriam Safran is. Are you still here, Miriam?
She's in Hill.
Pardon me?
She's in Hill.
Okay. So, but anyhow, we have an award for her, and I'll make sure that she gets that. That's actually, let's see, the end of my brief report.
That was brief.
If that's okay, well, try to pick up time.
Any questions?
I, I just love the picture.
Yeah.
I just love this picture. I really just.
How about those glasses?
And the glasses, that's right. We look alike.
Yeah.
I love the picture, I love it.
Moving right on, okay.
And, yes, Commissioner Davis?
I have a question. It's not on the report that you share. I think I've been here about four months, and I don't believe I've heard a report from the Parent Advisory Council, and so I'd like to some information on what's going on, 'cause I understand that's supposed to be the, the parent voice. And I haven't heard a report since I've been here.
I would just follow up on that. I was looking at JIRA. That is the project management software for implementing our action steps, and that is one of the action steps. And one of the things that we'll talk about in the workshop is, you know, that particular issue, 'cause you're right, that has, that, our action step said we would shore up or revitalize PAC. And so that's one of those items on there. So, yeah, absolutely. It should be something we should, we will be talking about in our work session about the DEES report. Yes?
So, why do we have to wait until the work session? And I don't know when the work session is, but we have a resolution in place already surrounding that?
Oh, no, I wasn't suggesting we have to wait, but the resolution is already passed, and I think your point is, nothing's been done.
Right.
So, Dan was taking notes, I assume Dan will follow up on it, but I, all I was saying is, when you look at the DE, our response to DEES report, as you all know, it indicates that there are 110 action steps, a number of them of ours, and at least two of them refer to the failure to move on PAC. And I'm saying, no matter when people work on it, during the work session, that should come up. And it may come up that Dan has already fixed it or he's begun to do it, but we have to, and I think that was your point, you wanted to know, hey, what's going on? But we don't have to wait, but obviously we can't do anything about it at this meeting.
Well, I, I brought it up because I thought I heard one of the names of the persons from PAC, having attended one of the events that you just uplifted. So they seem to be active, but I was just wondering why we're not hearing what they're doing.
And, and I could furnish the board a summary report of where we are with PAC, and you'll have it tomorrow, if that's all right?
Yeah.
I could tell you from my perspective, and this is, also, I would say this, Commissioner Shepard, I have tried to reach out unsuccessfully to PAC and the PAC leadership. So I, I'll continue to try to do that. Dan will continue to try to do that. But I was just saying, this is something that is on our list of things to do for the, our action steps of DEES report. But we all have to do what we can do, and I'll continue to try to reach the leadership.
And there is a PAC meeting on Monday, I believe, that I will be attending. So Commissioner Davis, if you'd like to go there to that PAC meeting and ask for yourself why they are not here, that may be a good time to talk about it. Because they do have a, I do know why they haven't been coming, but you need to go probably and discuss it yourself.
I'll be out of town, but maybe, I'll be out of town, but maybe I'll schedule something when I come back then.
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, can, I just wanna add, though, even if they have a reason for not coming, Commissioner Elliott, there's, the report is still due, but even beyond the report, the board did pass a resolution with certain expectations for changes to occur, and without that occurring, that there would be some additional action that administration would take. So that's the type of follow-up I would like to know and understand because right now, all this is doing is further hindering us from moving forward with a solid Parent Advisory Council. And there are parents that want to be involved, and again, I have said this before, parents should not be barriers for other parents. So we have to figure out how to just move forward at this point. The board already passed a resolution, and I, I would like us to just move forward at this point with the resolution that we passed.
And so that we're clear on this, the moving forward is the administration on that resolution. I think that's what you all are saying.
And we're, we are attending the PAC meetings, but again, I will also inform them about what was discussed tonight.
Dan, and I might be wrong about this, my colleagues will help me out, but I think that resolution was passed before you got here, right? So you might have your team revisit that because it was very specific about what they needed to do with their bylaws, and so I think that's what my colleagues are referring to.
I know.
Doctor, Doctor Keno?
Just, and you can remind me about the, the resolution, 'cause I wasn't so sure if the resolution charted the administration, but I do know that the PAC reports to the board, not the administration. But if I, I don't recall, I think it was your resolution, Commissioner Powell, if it did chart the administration, so that, clarification on that.
Specifically, the Parent and Community Engagement Office
Yeah.
that historically has interfaced with PAC to help them determine whether they're going to go back to their previous bylaws, which had, had been ratified by the board, or whether they were going to write a new set of bylaws. That's the issue at, at hand.
Yeah, but the, but the resolution was very limited. It was only around the, the bylaw, not on, like when President White mentioned the recommendations around the PAC, and my reporting your action item, I thought there were more than just the bylaws. So that's why the clarification, when you turned to Superintendent Lowengard, I just want, help, help me understand, because they do report to the board.
No, see, that's, you're wrong, they don't. They, they will issue their monthly report, but they don't, as an institution, report They will issue their monthly report, but they don't, as an institution, report to the board. And as a matter of fact, some of you who have a little history know that I am paneled, when I first became president, an advisory panel. And the suggestion was, the proposal was, that they report to the board because there was a feeling that the administration wasn't, and it wasn't Dan, of course, wasn't doing the kind of managing and monitoring. They communicate and they are supported by Parent Engagement, not the board.
So, that was a misunderstanding, even as late as just a couple of hours that where I made a comment because I was always told, I don't know, Carl, you can shed some light, I was always told that it was here and there's a board policy that they report to the board. And even two hours ago, I said, you know, in all my other districts, they always reported to the, no, to the administration. But here, it reported to the board. But I was told many times since my arrival, arrival here in August.
Commissioner Powell?
Yeah, the genesis for the Parent Advisory Council is found in the Parent Engagement Policy. It exists as a function of that. I mean, it's essentially chartered by the board through that policy, but we don't tell them how to conduct their business, except insofar as their bylaws have to meet, have to be consistent with other board policies. And that's why we reference the Parent Engagement Office and they interface with the Parent Engagement Office.
And that last policy, but I do want to, I do want to say, several of you, Commissioners, several meetings have said that, have at least said to me that they reported to the board. So, just some clarification, that would help too.
I think part of the problem, I've gone to several meetings, Linda has, Cynthia's been. Part of the problem is that the board passed a policy that PAC doesn't like. They have a different policy and that needs to be resolved. And I will spread the message again and let them know that it.
But here's the clarification that I would like to. So, my understanding is that PAC is a board sanction group. I'm there too, and that they do report to the board. And they use that against administration to say, we don't have to necessarily follow what you're saying because we report to the board. And then, there's this back and forth. Now, the resolution that was passed, they don't have to necessarily like it. The reason we passed that resolution was because they created bylaws that became barriers to other parents being involved on PAC. And the original intent of PAC was that we had parents from every school that can make and generate a council to have true representation. When you have a smaller group of parents who have been there for a number of years and have told parents and created processes, not that we're a board-created or policy-driven from this district, saying you have to interview now, we're the deciding factor whether you get in or not because we changed the bylaws, that is fundamentally wrong. And we, as a board, should not allow that. And that's why Commissioner Powell wrote that policy and that's why this board passed that policy so that we can have an opportunity to restructure PAC so that we have actual representation from parents in every single school and program that we have in this district.
So, let me, let me just, and I don't know if our clerk can pull up or Commissioner Powell or somebody can pull up, I was trying to do it myself. The, no, not the resolution, because I think we're all in agreement about what that says. The policy that created PAC.
I can't find it.
It's in 1900, right?
It's in 19, oh.
No, but.
That sanction PAC, that's our parent engagement policy.
Okay, so. It is in 1900. Can someone do me a favor and just pull that up? Because I think we need clarity, because I want to be very clear about this. I think people are thinking because they take that podium, we started that about three or four years ago. We said bilingual council, that's more recent, PAC, we wanted to engage them and have them a part of our meetings. Literally, reporting to the board does, on a monthly basis, does not mean they report to the board. And some of you who have some history in this district, there was a specific proposal, probably about four or five years ago, and it was hotly debated. And we asked PAC what they wanted to do and we asked other community people what they wanted to do because some members of the board were feeling like we didn't have any control over PAC. That it was an organization created by, because if you all remember, when Jean-Claude Bizard was here, there was a whole transformation of it. And who did the transformation, the superintendent. And you all who are around know that the Board of Education, we go to the meetings periodically, I've been going to them for years, and we exchange information. They talk occasionally when they show up to do the reports. But what has sustained that organization, and if you look at our organizational chart, they, they report to Parent Engagement. They get their direction and support from Parent Engagement. They, there's never been, it's not like Claims Audit or the Auditor General where they report to the board. That is not, they have never been in the line of sight of the board's authority. And that has been part of the frustration. So, all the resolution did was say, which we're authorized to do, is, hey, listen, if you're going to exist, you got to exist by your bylaws. But we do not, we absolutely do not have control over a PAC. They report to us, but they, we do not control them. Has somebody, has somebody found the policy that they can read it?
But the, hold on.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to say, the issue is their disagreement with the resolution and we need Monday to get it resolved or move on, is what I'm hearing from the board. Whether they answer to the board or to the administration, the key is, what's been stumbling has been that resolution. And I don't hear you, any of the board members, saying we're going to change our resolution.
Right, so you'll take care of it.
I'll take care of it.
Yes, Commissioner Shepard?
So, I just want to add, if that's true, that the resolution that we passed gives a bunch of different things that we were requiring that they change in regards to their bylaws. But then, it also says that the Board of Education declares that the Parent Advisory Council will not be recognized as a legitimate district-wide parent organization as long as it operates under the amended bylaws. So, that sounds like in our resolution that we would be making a decision as a board to.
Well, to say, I'm sorry, to say that an organization exists or does not exist doesn't mean we control their operations. There are lots of entities within the district that we could say, we're not going to have this department anymore, or we are, but still, the administration runs the department.
Yeah, that's not what I'm saying. If we shut down their operations, that's a certain control over the actual body. And you're saying that they don't belong to us.
No, I'm saying they don't report to us. That was the controversy. There were members of the board that wanted to have that control and the members of the board, that wasn't the majority. So, we do, think about it, have we ever issued them, other than that resolution, any directive? And I guess I really wish somebody could find the.
So, can I just add, I'm sorry, can I add?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so, I hear what you're saying, Dan. And I do have a lot of the history on PAC because I spent last year going to people that used to work here that had paper copies of it, scanning it from way back when to the first PAC, to the disbandment of that PAC for a lot of dysfunctional reasons, to the restart of the new PAC. I will share that information with all of you here. You got to give me a few days to pull it up from my email, it's in different emails, but I will get that to everyone. However, saying that we're not going to acknowledge them is clear in the resolution. And for me, that means that we start a new PAC, a parent council that we are going to acknowledge and that we're going to create a pipeline to support parents from different schools. Because part of the original bylaws, this was the biggest issue I had with the bylaw change, was that schools could nominate a parent from PTA, PTO, or school-based planning, or a parent that was involved in a school that wanted to be a representative for that school and nominate them to be, to serve on PAC. And they changed that process to say, we're going to start interviewing them and weeding them out because you don't get to tell a parent what engagement looks like for them. We don't know people's life and what they're carrying and still trying to be a part of their child's life and be a voice. We don't get to, we don't get to do that and we should not allow parents to do that to other parents. So, and the resolution is very clear. They don't have to like the resolution and the fact that we're asking them to change the bylaws. If they don't do it, we move on and we start a true PAC with the original bylaws and we move forward and we identify new parents to serve in this role. And then, we have the Office of Parent Engagement, support them through and through and offer them leadership and guidance and an opportunity to understand what their role are and how they're advocates. And then, this board should be meeting with them, but those meetings should be public. The Board of Education should not be having private meetings with any group or entity and having conversations that parents can't understand what is being said or being advocated on their behalf. So, it's a note from me, I want to move forward at this point with the resolution we have and start a new PAC.
Commissioner Powell?
The only thing I want to add to the discussion, from leaving off where Commissioner Shepard read the resolution, is that paragraph around recognizing PAC was simply to afford the PAC leadership the choice. Either go back to your original bylaws that had been ratified by this board or write a new set of bylaws that complies with all of our other policies that you very extensively detailed, Commissioner Lebron. But we're not telling them how to move forward, we're just, you know, they have choices. But what they're, apparently, what's happening is they don't want to make those choices. They want to keep doing what they've been doing and that is not an option.
I think we're all in agreement that the resolution has to be complied with. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, if anybody wants to see it, it's paragraph five. It looks like a policy number 1900. It's actually 1900.3. And it describes, I'll just read it because this is what I was looking for. "A district-wide parent advisory council shall be established to provide parents with opportunities to serve as leaders in, at the district level. The parent advisory council shall consist of representatives from school-based planning organizations and other parent groups, PTAs, PTOs, school-based planning teams, et cetera. The parent advisory council shall be composed of parents, legal guardians, and all those with custody currently enrolled in the Rochester School District except that current Rochester City School District employees shall not be eligible to serve on the parent advisory council. All meetings by the parent advisory council shall be open to the public, to all district parents, legal guardians, individuals with custody of student parents enrolled in the RCSD. No parent, legal guardian, or individual with a custody of a currently enrolled RCS student or district staff member shall be denied entry into the meeting of the parent advisory council. The schedule of the parent advisory council meetings shall be posted. Parent advisory council will regularly update district parents, legal guardians, and individuals with custody of student, community students currently enrolled in the Rochester School District of changes in the council's meeting schedule or location, major developments in the district, and opportunities to provide an input into decision-making. The bylaws of the parent advisory council must adhere to the requirements contained in this policy. Any changes in the bylaws of the parent advisory council must be ratified by the Rochester Board of Education. The parent advisory council will meet periodically with the superintendent, the representatives, and members of the Board of Education to share and discuss issues of concern affecting students' education and school environment. The superintendent and at least one board member shall meet annually with the parent advisory council to evaluate this policy, identify barriers to success, and recommend policy changes to eliminate or overcome barriers." All right, so that's, Dr. Keno?
So, just an observation, so my report was released November 14th, so about five months. And I'm about to finish my quarterly report. And there, I recommended that, because of my finding, that PAC be restructured. I even gave an example, not the model, but a model for the reason that hopefully, I think the district PAC plays in a key role in representing the voices of the, of the parents in the decision-making and that was not happening. So, and I actually don't think it should have taken that long to restructure the PAC. But as of now, five months later, you could have actually done this even before you submitted your, your response to this day in this piece, and I think no action has been taken. And I think it's just because of the lack of understanding of who has authority over the PAC.
No, I respectfully disagree. It wasn't a question of who has authority. It was a question that that group did not like this resolution. And I'm clear about what I'm doing Monday to meet with them so they understand. You're, you're popular all over the city except with one little group. But anyhow, Linda, do you have anything to add? Because I was at that meeting and then had to go to another one.
I already told the board a few weeks ago, after the last time we met with them, Dr. Golden and I and Beth were there, and they were, we left it, that they, they were, took it upon themselves that they wanted to work on policy 1900 and suggest some changes. They were not, at that point, in accord, as you, as you know, with the resolution. And it was the president who had said she didn't want to move any farther until she had a chance to meet with President White. And that's how it was left.
I will reiterate some things that I said the last time we had some conversations. Because I have this feeling that there is tension between this board and parents. That should never be. I don't care whether they're wrong, like I said before, if they're wrong, they're still right. If they're right, they're still, they're right. So, for this board to have this sort of kind of animosity between the parents and us, when they're wrong, they're right. So, I would hope that we would take a different kind of attitude and see how can we come to a win-win on this situation. Because I don't like hearing what I'm hearing from this DAAS that we have this animosity against any parent. It shouldn't be. We've got to begin to think about how do we change our mindset. There may be something wrong on both sides. I'm not saying it's not, but what I'm saying is, they are parents and in no way should we in any way be having any kind of antagonism against parents, never. I don't care what they do.
So, can I, I want to add, oh, so, a few things, Van. You just read the policy and part of the bylaw changes that they made was that parents could stay on serving for kids that they no longer had in the district for up to two years. That was one of the changes that they made that conflicts with the policy. So, the other piece I want to add and I'm going to reiterate again is that we can't ignore all the other parents who have continuously complained about their experiences, trying to get involved in PAC, trying to be a part of PAC, and trying to be a voice for their kids. We can't give 10 parents the voice over 25, 35, 45 other parents who have emailed this board, who have also come here to complain, who have stopped us in the streets, who have come to the meetings and were escorted out or kicked out of a meeting. These are public meetings, it stays in our policy. You cannot, how can we allow a parent group to create bylaws that conflict with our policies and parents' rights? So, yes, I hear you, we're not saying that those parents are wrong, they're right. We cannot ignore all the other parents for a smaller group of parents. And I think that's wrong, that's an injustice for me. So, we absolutely need to support all of our parents in schools. We talk about barriers for parent engagement. PAC is a barrier right now for parent engagement and that we should not allow.
But that's what, Mr. President, that is what needs to be worked out. That's where you start, how do you come together? That's what we have to do. And I'll say it again, I'll die on this. We cannot ignore, I have this animosity against any parent, I don't care how wrong they are. We perceive them as being wrong. When I've had some conversations with them, they had a rationale for what they, why they did what they did. We need to find out why they did what they did and see how we can work with them on that.
Okay.
In the meantime, we have parents who have been neglected and not allowed to participate and while we continue to have this conversation. So, I just want to say, the board already passed this resolution and again, reiterate that we just need to move forward at this point.
By our bylaws, it absolutely would be, absolutely. Okay, all right. Hold on, hold on, hold on.
The meeting Monday, if you recall, is a parent session on the next-generation standards and a couple of other pieces. It's not, it's not a regular meeting of PAC, so I just want to be clear about that. It's at SOTA and it's not a regular open, it's not a regular business meeting, it's a, it's a parent session, so.
But is it still open?
No. Oh, it's not closed, no.
Right, okay.
Pardon? Oh, yeah, it's public. It just isn't a business meeting, it's a presentation.
You know, one of the things that, and I think when we, as we have these meetings, and with all due respect, Dr. Kino, there's a lot of work to be done. And each time you find that we miss something, you say, oh, this should have been done. There's a lot that should have been done, and we're getting it together with Jira. So I've just really, I gotta be, Jira is a project management software. I'm just going to be honest with you. Each time you find that there's a misstep, you say, oh, that should have been done. And there's a lot of things that people in this room and outside this room have done, right? All right? And I would like to, I'm going to just be frank with you, we've all been transparent with each other. It's important that you recognize the things that we don't do, and maybe there may be a reason behind it. Talk about that, but also talk about, with some degree of regularity, the things that we are doing. Because as one of these parents said, I think it was this young lady here, there's a lot of good things happening in this district, and people need to hear that. And we don't need to capitalize and jump on the things that, you know, and there's not a person on this DAAS who hasn't been concerned and trying to push this issue. Now, could have we done it a month or two earlier? Yeah. But there's a whole lot of other stuff we've been doing. All right? All right. So I want to say that we have a lot of people working and who have interests. Anissa Henry Reeler is one of those people, and I said, hey, Anissa, because, you know, I'm a lawyer, I think, what's the background of this? And I'm not going to read it to you, but on top of the policy that I read to you all, I asked, I said, Anissa, are there, y'all may not know this, for every policy, for virtually every policy, there's a superintendent regulation. So as we have this conversation, it's important, Anissa sent it to me, I'm not going to bother to read it to you, but talks a lot about the superintendent. Maybe that needs to be fleshed out a bit as well. So I think we know where we're going. We probably have at least two meetings before you're back on the DAAS, or you're, we're going to have, because there was a resolution passed. I don't want anybody to think that there's, at least from my perspective, that resolution shouldn't be filed through. By next meeting, we're going to have some response, some progress to report. And it will be based on the resolution, the Policy 1900, and the superintendent regulations. There will be an update, Dan will give us an update, and hopefully other board members, because I'll be talking to them as well. All right? We good with that? All right. All right, next item on the agenda, thank you, Dan, for that report, and thank you all for having that conversation. I think that's an important conversation. Let's see, so now we move on to the consideration of resolutions. I need a motion to discuss Resolutions 775 through 798. Been moved by Vice President Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Powell. The good news is, there are no tenure resolutions. Thank you, Harry, appreciate that. Any questions or comments regarding Resolutions 775 to 798?
He just don't want to go into executive session, that's why.
Any questions? There being no questions or comments, all those in favor of Resolutions 775 to 798, say aye. Aye?
And I'm just going to do, I'll just do 785 and 786 as yes.
785 to 786, you voted yes.
Yes.
787 and 798, you voted no.
Yes.
Thank you.
And it's a no for me on 789.
Next, I need a resolution to discuss 799 through 805.
Some of.
Been moved by Commissioner Powell. Can I get a second?
Not for me.
I don't know.
I'll second, but I have a question on one of them.
It's been seconded by Commissioner LeBron. Commissioner LeBron, you got a question?
Yeah, on Resolution 804. So I have a couple of questions, I wrote them down, too. So this, I don't know if you guys can hear me. This is for curriculum development, which I'm still very confused why I constantly see curriculum development resolutions, and I just don't understand how that actually translates into curriculum at some point. So I think I would like, as a board, to have some type of understanding as to why we see curriculum resolutions almost every single month. That's one. But for this one in particular, it's the Pan-African curriculum, Africa and the African Dysphora curriculum. And I needed to understand how this is being tied to the Victorious Mind curriculum, and that curriculum that we've paid a lot of money for. I want to understand if they're working together to expand it, are these working, are they working together? Are there two separate curriculums? Why do we pay for one and not extend it? But also, when this curriculum's going to be completed, when it's going to be implemented, and what the plan of implementation's going to be.
Commissioner?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner, for this one, 804, you'll notice that this is titled For Funding. It's a grant, and the monies came in late, and I would not bring it to the board without the monies in hand. So that's why that's so late. In regards to VMA, it is another initiative, and not having that in front of me, I do not remember what funding that came out of, but.
My question is, are they working together, grant-funded or not? I still feel that there has to be some cohesiveness to the fact that we've paid for a curriculum around, that's supposed to be culturally competent, and now here we're going to start another curriculum, and I'm just not understanding what age in group, you know, what grades this one is targeting. I know Victorious Minds, that, and that curriculum was K through 2. And if we're expanding Victorious Minds and that curriculum and that work, and how is it connecting?
The, first, they do work together in terms of collaborating, talking about how we build a continuum. This for the African-American, Pan-African-American curriculum is for higher grades, middle and high school. So there is no overlap there in terms of what's been paid for and what we're proposing.
And the other question was, when is this curriculum going to be completed? When it's going to be implemented, and what's going to be the plan of implementation?
We have a presentation scheduled, I think, for next month. The curriculum will be continued throughout summer, because there is, there are courses involved, and then there is the African history infusion into all subject areas. So mathematics, social studies, and science. And the LA, of course.
Can you, when you guys do the presentation, can you show examples and evidence of that?
Yes.
All right.
Any other questions for the administration? There being no.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, absolutely.
On some of these, the resolution includes several different programs. Is there a way to tease them out? Like if you say yes to one of them, you're saying yes to everything under it. Is that a typical way of doing this, that you don't separate out the different grant additional pays?
Well, sometimes what we do from this end, I don't know if there's a better way to write them up, but what we do is, we'll offer a friendly amendment, and you say, listen, I want, I don't know which one you could do, but.
Pages, 20s.
Pull out one of them if you.
Yeah, you could say.
So like if 804 has a whole bunch, I could say just one of them.
You could say, I want to offer 24, I want to amend this particular resolution, make it 24A, which would include, and that would mean it would be removed from that, and then we would just be voting on the balance of it, and then we would vote on your 24A. You see what I'm saying?
Or 804 in this case. All right, thank you. So that's a process that I could follow.
You could do it right here. Now, whether there is something that they could do in advance, I'm not, you know, I'd have to talk to Jerry and your team.
Yeah. We, you know. If we got the feedback from a board member that they want to vote yes on one and no on another, after the PAC, it comes out the first time, it can be amended before it comes before us.
It comes here, yeah. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of Resolutions 799 to 805, say aye. Aye?
Aye. And a no to all.
I'm also no. So am I.
Okay. The ayes have it. Next, I need a resolution to discuss, Resolutions 806 to 809.
No, there's nothing there.
Oh, the place holds, oh, thank you.
No budget, I was, oh, okay.
No. I need a resolution to discuss, Resolutions 810 to 817.
Some of.
Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Powell, seconded by Vice President Elliott. Any questions or comments regarding those?
Yes, I've asked this a while, some years ago, but my, Mr. Superintendent, if I could have Mike to respond to Resolution 811, the negative $32,116 for that resolution, what does that negative amount mean?
What do you have to add?
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you.
She doesn't care.
Didn't even have to come up, Mike. Any other questions regarding Resolutions 810 to 817? There being no additional questions, all those in favor of Resolutions 810 to 817, say aye. Aye. Any opposition? There being no opposition, those resolutions pass. Finally, we have other, 818 to 824. Any, I need a motion to discuss those particular resolutions. Been moved by Commissioner LeBron, seconded by.
Second.
Commissioner Powell, any questions or comments regarding those resolutions? There being no question, I'm sorry, Commissioner Davis?
Do you know if an evaluation's been done of the Upstate Music Therapy Center?
That's Resolution 819.
So we have, we have our students that are in our GEM program and our 614 ASD program that are receiving services through music therapy. There has been an evaluation done. The students that currently are receiving services, they are mandated based on their IEPs, and they have not been successful with other forms of therapy, not with occupational therapy, speech therapy, and we have six students that are still requiring music therapy.
It's being, it's being helpful.
It is, it is, yep. And the other forms of therapy are not.
Okay, nice.
What, yeah, what kind of music is used in music therapy?
From my understanding, and I don't want to, I don't want to misquote, but I know that there is jazz that's being used, classical therapy, and some mixture, so I just know jazz and classical.
So add, Keisha, on your behalf, too, having had kids with IEPs where music was required and pushed by the parents because it was a method for them to.
Yeah.
Either soothe them or reengage them and break some of the school routine for them. A lot of times, that's just part of their IEP. That's what kids somehow adapt to, the music, some kids are art, some are Lego. So as part of their IEP, we do have to provide those services as well.
I'm not questioning, I just was interested in knowing what kind, I mean, what kind works.
What kind of, yep.
That has the impact.
Yep. And it's important, one of the things that we are looking at moving forward for next year, because this contract is for the remaining part of this year, is to start engaging our own department, our own music department. Yeah, so we're working with Dominic, and we're looking at doing that for next year.
Any other questions or comments regarding 818 to 824? There being no additional comments, all those in favor of Resolutions 818 to 824, say aye. Aye.
Can you do 822? In there?
What do you mean?
Isn't 822 the suspension appeals? Did you just do all of them together?
There are none.
Oh, we don't have any today?
Yeah, that's just, well, no, if there aren't any questions, we can vote on it.
See, there's no name, there isn't a student listed for this one. I thought we had, I thought we were sent a packet.
Yeah, we were sent the packet.
Oh.
Again, we traditionally, as a rule, will go ahead and go into executive session, but that's for when we have questions regarding the suspension appeal.
The, the resolution is grayed out, and I'm not sure why, but the, our resolution was distributed to the board and the board is going to be, you know, so you're right to say.
Did I take a vote on that? No. All those in favor of Resolutions 818 to 824, say aye. Aye?
For me, except 821.
Did you get that?
No to 821.
And no to 821 for me as well.
And so I have questions on 822.
Well, we, well, we voted. I said all those in favor. And she gave a no, she.
Oh, that's fine.
Oh, that's okay.
It's a no for me.
All right. All right, so we got one no to 821 and 822, right?
No.
Two no.
Two no. Okay, all right. All right. Give me one second here, folks. I wanted to, again, I asked Anissa to look at the policy, and here's the interesting thing, it's a long regulation, but here's what it says about the superintendent and PAC. It says, "The PAC, the parent council, shall have direct advisory input to the superintendent and the Board of Education according to a process and criteria established by the superintendent regarding priorities reflected in the district's budget and major proposed amendments in the district's budget, and on the degree of parent and community support for those priorities. The superintendent shall retain responsibility and authority for determining that which is to be included in the budget submitted to the board." So thinking back to that earlier history I was talking about, Jean-Claude Bizardre reconfigured PAC based on that regulation. So that doesn't mean this board can't change that, change the policy, and then that means the regulation has to be changed. So we got a lot of work to do, but I think we know what work has to be done, and it begins with making sure that they comply with the resolution. Given the regulations, it's Dan's responsibility to make sure they comply at this particular point. And he's promised you all that he will do that. Okay, new business. I want to thank the clerk for getting this stuff in order for me. We have to accept the quarterly change report. Normally, I don't know, I think Commissioner Powell, you would do that, change order report for Mark, the change order report. Commissioner Powell, can you just do that, since you're so used to do that?
Yes, could I move that the board accept the quarterly change order report? We'll take that as this one resolution, or?
All those, they're second to that motion. Second to the motion? Thank you, Commissioner LeBron. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposition?
Then, if I could please make a motion to accept the March monthly financial reports.
Been moved by Commissioner, Vice President Elliott, seconded by Commissioner LeBron. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
On page 29 of the report, where you compare our spending for last year and this year, it looks like we possibly, did we go negative in our balance for this year?
Oh, page 29.
Is that page 29?
Yes. Oh, you're talking about the cash flow, right.
Yes, the cash flow. I just wanted to understand more of what happened this year that's different from last year at this time.
You said the cash flow document?
Yes.
Okay. And your question is?
The question is, the cash flow for this year is much less than for last year, and it looks like one month we even went negative in our cash flow. Can you, do you know what caused that difference between this year and last year?
It's the timing of when certain intercepts happen from the state, for one, and then it also depends on the timing as to what we, when we get money from the state. So we have a fixed cash flow that we get certain payments coming in on a regular basis. So if, for example, when the city gives us our money, if at that time, the state is also intercepting some money from them to make our bond payments that we talked about a couple days ago. When they pull that money out, and then we have to pay charter school and certain things that are fixed, then we run into a negative. When we run into the negative, the arrangement with the city is that they will front us the money.
Oh, okay.
And then, like now, going forward, we have excess money. And when their cash flow is in deficit, they will utilize that funds and pay us a very small interest. So because the city manages our fund, we don't manage our own cash, the city does that. Anytime we have to make a payment where we're short, then they would front us the money because they have cash flow on their hands. And then after February, then we have a flush of cash, and they will utilize that. So we don't go out and do any ban or any ran, because to do a ban and a ran, it's pretty expensive. But if we utilize the funds among ourselves, then the only thing we have to pay maybe is like a .01 or .025% interest, which is minimal.
Except this year, we're doing a ran and a ban.
Right, because of the situation that was mentioned Tuesday night.
I just want to.
And we anticipate that we will need to do a ran next year. So we're going to do a ran for about seven to potentially eight months. That's where you get the $750,000 at a 2.25% interest rate.
And so again, this is mostly due because of the timing that we are reimbursed by the. are reimbursed by the, the state.
Right. And we have weak with cash flow that we share with the city, and, you know, we see where we are, we are going to be in deficit, and they say, well, they'll cover us, and then when we have the cash, they will show us unwillingly their cash flow, and then we see where they, because now is the time when they need money. This is their peak time where, where they're needing funds, but we don't have a peak time now because we've already covered most of our expenditures.
Okay.
I would just add, for Commissioner Davis' benefit, that, that the negative number you see in, in December, this is, this, if you see a negative number on our cash flow reports in any year, it's likely to be in December because of the way the revenues come in. It's the, the last, the last payroll in December, especially if there's three payroll cycles in the month, can often push us to the place where we, we don't have the cash on hand. But it's, it's a little bit, looking at it is a little bit like reading your escrow analysis on your mortgage. We don't have the benefit of being able to just add to the mortgage payment to cover a larger escrow. We, we have to go to some other source.
Well, the main question was just because last year, we didn't go negative at all, so, I just wanted to know, there's something special that happened this year.
All right.
But I understand it's tiny.
All right, I, I think we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is policy information items. There's proposed revisions to the student health, student attendance and wellness policy, five thousand one hundred, and then there is one proposed policy change to advisory policies, twenty-two sixty. And, and all we do on information items is we just put them before the board, and there's really no discussion necessary. But I did want to note, and it relates to the Distinguished Educators Report and our work on that, when we had our last meeting, there was some conversation about the fact that it didn't look like much was done, and I want to be clear about this, and I take some responsibility for that. We just got that software, that project management software, four weeks ago, and I, my comment is, is definitely directed to you, Dr. Keno. I, I would, I would like, if at all possible, for your quarterly report that you submitted, where you indicated that, I think your comment was, not much was done, and that was correct if you looked at JIRA two days ago, three days ago, four days ago. But again, we were just, the software just got in place four weeks ago, I just got training a week and a half ago, along with our staff, and not all the entries were made, and I'll give you a perfect example of that. Back in December, I submitted this resolution, which was consistent with one of your recommendations, that we look at, reexamine the advisory body structure, and way back in December, I submitted these proposed resolutions, which are now before the board as information items. Unfortunately, I did not, because I just got training, I did not add this into JIRA. There were, last night, because I was concerned about, to be honest, your quarterly report, and I wanted it to be accurate, I was here until ten o'clock last night, until the security guard kicked me out, because what I was doing was implementing all the stuff, it wasn't stuff I'd done, it was stuff that the board had done, that had not been inputted into JIRA. So, I didn't want your quarterly report that you submitted to be inaccurate because it was, but only because we just got JIRA, and the information was just put in. The activities were done, but they just weren't in JIRA. So, if you look at JIRA now, you'll see, particularly with respect to governance, that a lot of stuff was already done.
So, clarification, President White, I know, when I made the comment, I have not submitted my report.
Oh, I thought you said you had.
No, 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 no. And I've, like, I've met even with the administration, I've gone into JIRA, I review everything, I also, face to face, I've checked, I've met with the board clerk, too, even before you, I know, so, I'm going back.
Okay.
It has now been submitted.
Okay, good, all right, sorry for the misunderstanding, I just want, you said something, and I thought you said it had been submitted, but my misunderstanding.
No, no, no.
Okay, good, good.
I, I just want to add, though, President White, I don't know what's been done, and I'm on the board, so, I, besides the survey and suspending the committees, and I'm not talking about administration, because I do want to acknowledge very publicly that administration has been doing a lot of work, and I will acknowledge that, but in terms of our portion of it for this board, I don't know what's been done, besides those two points. So, I hear what you're saying, and, yeah, up to Tuesday, we didn't even know that this was going to be the software management program we were going to use. So, I, I, I hear what you're saying, but I also don't want the public to have a different perception of what's really going on, because as a board member, I don't know what's going on, and I don't know if my other colleagues can speak confidently and say that they know what's been done besides those two pieces that I mentioned.
Well, by way of example, you, you do know what's going on, for example, this advisory thing that was submitted in December. Now, maybe you don't recall that it was submitted in December, but this was clearly done, if you look at it, it was done for the purpose of being in compliance with the DE's recommendation that we examined it. Another thing, for example, and there's many more, if you get on JIRA, you'll see it, another thing that we did, and every, and a number of our people up here are witnesses to it, we've done multiple retreats, right? That was consistent with the report, that was not in there. So, those are just two examples of items that you said you didn't know that we'd done this stuff, the retreats, we've done at least three retreats.
Van, I'm familiar with one retreat where not the full board was there, I just want, I mean, I, I, these are the things, this is why unfortunately, we do tend to go, yeah, one.
Just this quarter, just to make sure, at least that I know this quarter,
This quarter.
this quarter, one.
The point I was, the point I was making is,
That's all I'm making.
let me be clear, the point I was making was, there is a system called JIRA
Yes.
that has just been put in place, and if you looked at it, it appeared as if a lot of stuff was not done. We're required, because we agreed to do it, as we decided, everybody here would input what we've done into that system. The only point I was making is, I wasn't talking about quarters or this, I was concerned that a lot of the good work that this board has done, this board has done, was not appropriately entered into the system. Whether it took place five months ago or two months ago, it, a lot of that work was done consistent with what your recommendations were, and the reason why I brought it up was, this is an example of it. They said, this call for restructuring, you remember that, you said, you ought to examine your advisory bodies, and this was done back in December, and now, pursuant to our processes, it's coming up for an information item. That's all I'm trying to say, we've done work, and nobody should be arguing that. But, Ms. Felling, do you want to talk about the other ones?
Yes. As you know, that we've been trying to catch up on policies that are in need of updating, and the next priority that we had established was to update the student attendance and withdrawal policy, and essentially, the changes that are proposed here are based on the New York State School Boards Association sample policy, but this revision is more flexible because it allows the superintendent to establish regulations and guidelines for a number of items, rather than putting it in the policy, so that, that way, as things evolve in the district, it could be more easily modified, and some of those are, just examples, monitoring attendance to identify students who are beginning to show a pattern of absenteeism, and also providing options for early intervention for those students, and offering some guidelines in terms of attendance incentives that could be used at the district and the school level. So, that's outlined in the policy, and the superintendent is directed to, to develop regulations on each of those items. Also, there's an annual reporting requirement, so that the board would receive data for the current year regarding student attendance and for students dropping out of school, and it would be compared to historic trends for, at the district level and at the school level. And then, we also have, so, those are the two information items this month, and then we also have the two discussion items, the revisions to the Health and Safety Program policy and the Safe Schools policy, which were presented last month.
Thank you very much, Ms. Felling, for helping out, and by the way, my apologies, I did not realize it, that yesterday apparently was Administrative Assistance Day, was, what was it called?
Administrative Professionals Day.
I did not realize that, and tomorrow, you'll make sure, I will make sure that on behalf of the board, I get our act together, I will appropriately recognize, so, thank you very much.
Okay.
Appreciate, we appreciate you, I know, I absolutely. The next item in the agenda is executive session, unless there's something that has to be covered before we make that motion.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's, thank you very much. Did you want to say something else?
Not, yeah, I do, not about that, though.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I just want to talk about, so, Dan, this policy actually was updated and revised before you came, so, I just want to throw that out there, but it is policy number forty-three twenty-seven, and I primarily want to talk about it because we've had homeschool instructors come out here quite a bit this budget season, and in that policy, one, when we, when this board passed, revised that policy last year, it was with the intention to allow a broader group of students that would be able to have home instruction, so, for example, we had heard, had heard a student who was the primary caretaker for their mother who had cancer, and that child was not attending school because they were primarily taking care of them, and so, we wanted to ensure that that student would have access to home instruction until we can figure out some other linkages to services for that family. So, I, I hear them tonight, but in that policy, I went back to it today while we were up here, because I just realized that, one, we extended that policy to offer home instruction to a broader group of students than just what had historically been, we've been serving. But in there, there was a data piece, and I know that you weren't here, but I do want to bring this up, because I would like the data around this piece, and that was that we would provide, so, we were going to monitor this extension of the policy of alternative instruction by a number of students, we wanted to know the number of students referred for alternative instructions, this aggravated data and the reasons for alternative instruction referrals, of those referrals, how many were actually approved for home instruction, I just want to add that, the data of the number of students placed in each alternative instruction program, the length of time between the referral and the placement in instruction, in alternative instruction, and student outcomes from alternative instruction. So, I know in the wake of all of this, I would like to, before we make a final decision on these cuts, get that data, and also, in here, we said that that was going to be monitored, and that the superintendent will provide a quarterly report to the board, but again, you were not here when all of this happened, but I would like to request that quarterly report, and the policy number is forty-three twenty-seven, if you want to go back to it. And then, I just want to ask about the report for links, I know that you were going to do a presentation or mention that there was going to potentially be a presentation today on links, but if that's not happening, can we get an update on when it will happen?
Okay. No, that, that presentation's not going to happen today, but Dan is going to reschedule.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments before we go into executive session, other than the calendar? I know you're going to say we have to do that. We wanted to make sure that, while we had everybody as a captive audience, that everybody picked up their calendars, and, because I know there was some exchanges of emails regarding when the best time to meet to have that work session, which, by the way, is one of the designated actions that we said we were going to take, that's actually in our response to DE's report, so, the, our clerk said, hey, can we just, since we got everybody here, can we just have everybody look at their calendars and see what might work? Dr. Lee, do you want to maybe start by proposing some dates, or?
Sure, so, what you have in front of you on the dais is the last version of the calendar, the board's meeting calendar, it was last updated last Friday, so, if you turn to the month of May, you'll see that it hasn't been updated yet with the correct form dates. But in referencing this calendar, I proposed a, a meeting date of Tuesday, April thirtieth at three PM. So far, I've heard from one commissioner stating that that time was convenient, I would like to, from everybody else, or if there are any other dates that you all would like to suggest, you can.
I'll be out of town on the thirtieth.
Okay.
Is this to schedule one work session, or make it a standing work session?
Either or.
I would like to suggest that we, we schedule standing work sessions until we complete not only the updates that we need to complete and give folks this weekend to review Commissioner Elyah's detailed response, but we do need to make adjustments, so, I would just want to uplift that we should have it, like, whatever date we pick and time, that we can have it standing, so, you may not be available at that one, maybe we could record it or figure out a way to capture some minutes, so that whoever's not available can get the information, but that it's a standing meeting moving forward for at least a couple of weeks.
April thirtieth, what time?
Three o'clock, it was suggested three to five PM, of course, that's just the first suggestion, if Tuesdays don't work well for everyone, we can go to another date, but you can reference the board's meeting calendar.
I, I cannot make that date, I'm on trial, so.
Can I suggest Wednesdays, because that's not our typical meeting day to have work sessions until we complete what we need to do?
Are you proposing, like, every Wednesday
Yes.
or every other Wednesday?
No, every Wednesday till the work is completed.
So, the first one would be Wednesday, May eighth, are you suggesting three PM?
The first one on my calendar would be Wednesday, May first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay, no, it's okay.
I'm so anxious about all of this.
It's okay, I want to make sure we start right away, too.
Okay, I'm sorry, Wednesday, May first, is, we do have a leadership meeting that morning, but that afternoon is free.
Can we make them later than three?
Absolutely, it's up to you all.
You have a time suggestion?
Can you move it to five?
Five o'clock? Can everyone do five o'clock on Wednesday, May first?
If we do five to six, to six thirty, because after that, I'm going to church.
I think you could come five to six thirty and then leave for church, and even, I would say five to seven, but at six thirty, you need to leave.
So, I won't be available for the first couple, probably two or three.
Okay. So, are we, are we willing to set the date of Wednesdays, with the first meeting being Wednesday, May first at five o'clock, that we'll go
Five o'clock?
Wednesday at five?
Yeah, can we determine if we really need it? Not, not really need it every week, with all that we're already doing, if we decide on tasks that need to be done next Wednesday, need breathing room to, to do the task, I don't see being able to do whatever I'm assigned by the following Wednesday.
Well, let me just say, I think that my position would be to have us to meet consecutive times, if that's Wednesday, just so that we get the momentum going, and we know the direction that we're going in. You know, maybe we do that for the first four weeks and then break it off, but just for momentum, because something happens when we break it up, life gets in the way, and so, I think in order to get the momentum, and then to really talk about what the response for, from the commissioner is about, and, and to really begin to develop that, I think that we need to have those weekly sessions, that's just my, my feeling on that, and then later on, you know, that we can reduce the meetings to every two weeks or something to that effect.
Mr. President.
Yes, Commissioner Powell?
I'm with Cynthia, although it may be that we can't get a particular task done from one week to another, there, there is a backlog of things that we have information on that needs board decision-making, for example, the, we've already got a proposal from NISBA for board development, and we haven't, we haven't been able to discuss in whether we want to take the whole package or just some of the training that they propose, so, in order to move forward, we need to be meeting as a group to make those decisions and get it from the information gathering stage to a decision-making stage.
I, I would support at least initially, meeting every, if Wednesday is the day, that's fine, and then seeing after three or four meetings where we have to go, I anticipate, particularly if we adjust some of these timeframes, which is what the commissioner is talking about, we will be able to reduce the frequency of the meetings to every other week pretty shortly. I think, too, when you all look at JIRA, which, again, disaggregates the different tasks. I think too, when you all look at JIRA, which again disaggregates the different tasks that has been updated, you will find that we've made some headway. Again, there's, what I forgot to mention is the one-on-one meetings with individual board members, we've been doing that. The officers' meetings, we've been doing that, all consistent with the DE's report. But I, I think every week, as you suggest, Commissioner LeBron, we should be meeting. And then we'll see where it goes. So Wednesday, I'm, I'm down for Wednesday.
Okay, can I just add though, I, because this, this was some of the conversation via email. And I know Commissioner Hallmark's not here, but she did make a request that we have an agenda. And I want to uplift that too. Because we should have an agenda to say, we're going to talk about, you know, one, two, and three, so that we can stay focused and figure out what goals we want to accomplish with those three by the time we leave. Are we going to focus on? Well, we also have to, I already read the response, but rereading it and figuring out where we're at, where we, what changes we need to make. But I would like us to not just have work sessions where we're just coming and saying, we're going to divide everything up. I think that conversation can happen on the first meeting, that could be part of the agenda. But also, what exactly are we going to be focused on in each specific meeting by having an agenda? And I know you suggested that she chair some of that and maybe Commissioner Hallmark chair the, these work sessions and maybe.
She declined, she said it was fine for me to do it.
Okay, so if you want to send out an, an agenda and then that way we can have it beforehand so we're all prepared to just focus on a smaller piece of it at a time. And that way, I think we can get this done in four to five weeks in the month of May on Wednesdays in terms of the revisions that we need to make. Because we only get six weeks to submit them back to the state.
Let me just sort of, can I just sort of interject here? Here's the thing that I think that we may want to consider, Commissioner LeBron, that we talk about what our agendas will be for the next few weeks within the first meeting. The reason, the reason that I say that is because I don't want President White to do an agenda that you say for him to do and then there's some issues with it. So.
We could have that in the first meeting, dividing tasks and coming up where how we're going to agenda the meetings out moving forward.
There you go.
I, I.
You all ready for that?
Yeah.
All right.
So, so, go ahead.
So if we, if we do do that, we have, really have a specific agenda that we're actually going to focus on and take a small chunk, then I'll do the weekly. But I just don't want to come and we're sitting there every other week because nobody got a chance to do anything and we're planning right then. That's what I'm trying to avoid because that happens here.
Understood, understood.
Yep, I second that.
So this was the irony of yesterday. Staff was working on trying to figure out where we were at because you can't have any conversation unless you know exactly where you're at. So we completed what we could on JIRA, identified those areas that are clearly, have to be discussed by the collective and stuff that has not been addressed. Callia was putting that together. As I said to you all in the email the other day, she'll present that, will present that at our, I guess at the meeting on Wednesday. And you all can modify that, say that's fine. But it gives us something, because the last thing we want to do, and I think I heard a couple of people say it, we don't want to just get there and say, okay, let's have a conversation. What Callia, Deborah, and I and Shanae did yesterday was sort of provide some clarity with respect to where exactly we were at. And again, on Wednesday, you guys can do what you want to do with that. But I think it's important that we know exactly what has been done, what's not been done, and what stuff requires that we work together. So she'll have that on Wednesday, at our Wednesday meeting. So we, we've agreed to have Wednesday meetings for the foreseeable future, beginning with, what was the day, May the?
1st.
May the 1st.
5:00.
At 5:00, that we agreed to?
Yeah.
No, is that, is that right?
Yeah, 5:00, 5:00 to 7:00, with Commissioner Ely stepping out at 6:30.
Okay. All right. So there we go. Now, I need a motion to go into executive session to discuss legal matter.
Matter of collective negotiations.
Collective negotiations.
Abandon litigation.
Yay.
All right.
What he said.
That's, that's it, yeah, what he said. That motion's been made by Vice President Elliott, seconded by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor say aye. For those of you who are really dedicated to seeing the Board of Education complete its job, you are adjourning from the second floor Superintendent's Conference Room. For the rest of you, good night, have a good night. Thank you for coming.